Call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of June 20th. And we'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. And we do have some changes that I'm aware of. Under 4C, there's an annexation resolution. That is going to be removed from the agenda. In its place, we're going to add a report on the downtown Elks building. And then if you go to Tab 6, we will add Item E, which is the ETZ ordinance for the first reading. And then under City Commission, Tab 7, we'll add an item relating to the July 5th commission meeting. And I think that's all the changes that I'm aware of. Mr. Kessel or anyone else, do you have other changes?
President Johnson, I think you've captured them all.
All right. So with those changes, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
No, we'll second it.
We have the motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The second item of business then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing done, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have the motion second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll move to Tab 4. And the first item there is to hear the May financial report. Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I would like to highlight a few items from the financial report through May. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 42 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3 million and we're 97 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees include things like financial institution tax and franchise fees and is 68 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues we receive from the state and local governments such as highway distribution tax and oil production tax and is 24 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees and services include such things as building permit revenue and oil royalties and is 26 percent collected compared to budget. The building permit revenue is up 10 percent over last year. This category also includes the municipal court fines, which are 12 percent more than last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment, we have sold $1,352,000 of city lots through May. Our total general fund revenues equal $6 million and we're 64 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses through May are broken down by groups. They include general government, which is 40 percent expended compared to budget. Our public safety, which includes police and fire and is 37 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 36 percent expended compared to budget. And our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is 23 percent expended compared to budget. Our contingency and reserves include the West River Community Center major maintenance reserve and our contingency that includes our 20 percent share of the regional transit building. The total general fund expenses equal $3.8 million through May and we're 40 percent expended compared to budget. Our enterprise fund report shows the revenues and expenses of the three funds. This slide shows our water and wastewater funds, which we have combined in 2011 to better reflect like operations. A large increase in revenue in 2011 is due to bulk water sales at our water vendor. There are also several capital projects in this fund that will be financed that include the third cell improvements, the Lincoln lift station and the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. The solid waste fund also shows an increase in revenue due to added accounts for both residential and commercial growth. Our revenue is $1 million through May, which is 47 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses are $643,000, which is 34 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax report, in the 1 percent sales tax fund, we received $455,000 of revenue in May, which is up 46 percent for the year. We have reforecasted our sales tax revenue projection to reflect a 20 percent increase over last year. This is an increase of 33 percent of what was budgeted in 2011. Our expenses include $291,000 paid towards job creation and senior programs. This slide also shows the sales tax refund that was paid to the state due to overpayment of local taxes by a single taxpayer in 2010. Our half percent sales tax shows we received $228,000 of revenue in May, which is also up 46 percent for the year. This slide also reflects a reforecast of 20 percent increase over last year. Our expenses include $503,000 paid towards the West River Community Center bond. Our sales tax refund line item shown here is also due to the overpayment of local taxes in 2010. In our hospitality tax, we received $67,000 of revenue in May, which is up 37 percent over last year. We have reforecast our hospitality tax revenue projection to reflect a 35 percent increase over last year. This is an increase of 43 percent of what was budgeted. Our expenses total $95,000 and include the CVB Special Events Grant, their subsidy and our chamber membership. Our occupancy tax breakdown shows revenue and expenditures total $147,000 through May. This is 128 percent increase over last year. All occupancy tax revenues collected minus the small admin fee are paid to the CVB monthly. The street projects report shows we received $84,000 in revenue and we've expended $225,000 towards street projects through May. The reforecast column in this report shows the increase in the 50 percent share of the 1 percent sales tax that will be expected due to higher sales tax revenues. We have added a schedule to the report for the development impact fee program. This schedule shows the impact fee projects that have been approved and the funds available for future projects, which is $281,000 as of May. The 2011 budget reforecast highlights the general fund revenues that have been reforecast since the budget was approved last September. Most changes are due to the impact of oil development in our area, which increased considerably in the fourth quarter of 2010. The reforecast of sales tax was included as an additional column on their respective reports. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Johnson, can you go back to the previous slide? You know, we're showing about a $1.2 million increase in total revenue, but that really comes from the sale of city lots and that additional revenue will just be transferred to the future fund.
To the future fund, correct.
So we really, in terms of the general fund, we don't have a lot of additional revenue to work with then?
No, we had a, we expect a large increase in our state aid distribution due to the census figures. But we also had a decrease in our reforecast. We were budgeting for the oil money, the $500,000 additional that we get from the state in our general fund. We're now going to be pulling that out and putting it into a separate oil impact fund. So those two together basically netted each other and then we had the sales.
Okay. But the oil impact fund is just a way to account for how we spend any monies we might receive from the state. So I mean, the $500,000 that you pulled out, put into the oil impact fund, that can be used for general fund expenses
Correct.
Or actually any other expenses. But, so we're not really short that money for the general fund.
Right, we're just accounting for it in a different way.
Right, okay. Also though, the sales tax revenues, we're five months into the year, we're 40 some percent ahead. You're pretty conservative in assuming right now just a 20 percent increase. And again, at least with the sales tax or the half cent sales tax, those monies can be used for some general fund items too as it relates to infrastructure and property tax reduction. So we do have some additional funds to work with here. Yeah, okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Mrs. Johnson, before the meeting, you and I were talking about the line item for fees and services. You reminded me that we have the administrative fees and that from the enterprise funds.
Correct, it's only showing 26 percent collected compared to budget, but that's due to the administrative fees come out of the enterprise funds. We have been making that entry at year end. We've made some, we've had some discussions about possibly doing it semiannually or even possibly monthly just to help stop the fluctuation in that account.
That budget line item is $927,000. How much of that is the fees from the enterprise funds? Do you know?
The bulk of it, I believe it's about $700,000 that will come out of enterprise funds.
What I'm trying to get at is with all the building permits we were processing and the other fees, are those monies going to increase over what we have budgeted? Do you have a feel for that?
We know building, well, I shouldn't say we know. We believe billing permit revenue will be up over last year. Right now, it's only showing 10 percent, but we believe that's partly due to a backlog. So we did reforecast the number to equal to 2010, but it is possible it will be greater than 2010 was.
Okay. The other question I have is in the water and wastewater fund, we have a line item for miscellaneous revenues. And we're about double to date what was budgeted for that line item. Can you tell us what that is?
That, I believe, is actually where the bulk water vendor is being captured, but I would have to check.
Okay, I'd be curious to know what that is. You know, maybe for the next meeting or whatever.
Sure.
I believe that is a bulk revenue. It might be a good idea to break that out as a separate line item since it's become so significant.
And it does have its own account, so it'll be easy to pull that out separately.
That's all I have.
As long, just to follow up to Mr. Jackson's question, do you see bulk water sales? Have they been increasing or are they fairly stable? What, is there a trend there?
I believe they have been increasing. We have some accounts that are now putting in their own meters. They are being charged the bulk water rates. So I do think we're going to continue to see that increasing.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Johnson? If not, would there be a motion to approve the financial report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. The second one's by Mr. Jackson. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B is an employment contract with Greenwood &amp; Ramsey. Mr. Kessel, are you presenting this item?
I am, President Johnson. What you have before you is a contract to engage the firm of Greenwood &amp; Ramsey, most specifically Mr. Dan Greenwood of that firm to advise us on the issues related to the, what's been known as the old Elks or historic Elks building. Ebeltoff-Sickler has a conflict of interest in regards to that matter, so we cannot use them for advice on this particular issue. So Mr. Greenwood has provided me the employment contract that he has used. I did have Attorney Coling review the contract and if I can, he's agreed that this is standard in the industry. There is no initial retainer amount. As you're reviewing that, what we've discussed is simply an hourly rate to represent us in regards to this issue specifically.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any commissioners, do you have any questions or comments regarding this issue? If not, would there be a motion to approve the contract with Greenwood &amp; Ramsey?
I'll move we approve the Greenwood contract.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I see, Mr. Brinkman, you came into the room. Before you came into the room, we did approve a discussion or an agenda item here for discussing the downtown or historic Elks building. And that is actually next on the agenda. Are you prepared to make a few comments regarding the status of the building?
I am, thank you. I presented a letter to Mr. Sean Kessel last Friday related to the Elks building. We currently in the process of working with the gentleman here in the office, I mean, in the audience here tonight, Tim Quigg, to purchase the building. The building would, we've signed agreement related to that. Naturally, we would take, he needs to complete his due diligence and approval from the city. But it would keep the building in the same uses that were presented to you before and would take and keep the same occupants in the building, same uses except for all the condos may or may not have all the same people in them. But same intent. So we've taken and asked for, I believe it's 45 days, to present a business plan to all of you for approval. That, if you open to any questions and...
Thank you, Mr. Brinkman. Would any members of the commission have any comments or questions for Mr. Brinkman? Mr. President. Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Brinkman, who is Quigg International LLC?
Well, I can let Tim speak for himself, but they are a firm, they're here, original family company out of Washington. They've currently opened and have several businesses up in the Williston area and looking to take and expand and be part of the Dickinson community.
Would Mr. Quigg be prepared to come to the podium and maybe introduce himself and answer some questions?
Thank you, Beaver. Well, first, yeah, we're a little bit about ourself and our family, let's say, construction company. And a, two things, it's a heavy civil construction company family from Aberdeen, Washington. And we also own a refinery and an oil terminal in Tacoma, Washington. So it's a family business with two business models, heavy civil construction and a refinery in Tacoma. And started in 1895 in Aberdeen. And I came out here about nine months ago and just from, I don't know how much time I have, I don't want to bore you, but from a historical perspective, it is the exact same thing that is going on here, happened in Aberdeen, Washington 100 years ago. It went on to become the largest and wealthiest community in the country in the oil and timber industry. And both in construction and lumber, but it was the largest lumbering port in the world and I see tremendous similarities up here. And when I initially went to Williston, I engaged some of the locals up there. I don't know if you know the Mel Falcon family, but I'm a part owner of the refinery and worked with some of the state of North Dakota to build a small diesel refinery up in Trenton. That's our core business, Dakota Oil Processing, a small topping plant. And so I'm up there to do that. And since I got there, I purchased the Holland America Building, which is at the airport, the Williston Airport. And just from, I believe this is going to be potentially the largest, this is epic what's going on here. And I want to be a part of it. And my vision and those that I brought was to do it right and to hopefully be a part of something better than bring value. And when I came to Dickinson, I, for a host of reasons, I felt and I've expressed to my family members back home that this would be a, all good towns, but there's no question that this is going to be the right place. And I'm a lifetime Elks Club member. My grandpa, Quigg, lived at the Elks Club in Hoakland, was a lifetime member, lived at the Elks, shot the elk. My other family from Aberdeen, Washington, Samo, they lived at the Elks, so it was a natural to be a part of the Elks when I saw the structure. And I just felt when I came in that that's a touchstone to this community. And to be a part of it in any way, shape or form, you know, I feel tremendous greater good component to that building. So we've just signed a letter of intent and the like to be a part of it. And met potential partners back here, law firm. And I'm kind of excited to get here. I've got some other things I want to do and I'm not leaving Williston, but I think this is a good place to be. Is that, as far as up in the four condos, you know, I'll probably take one myself or be here on and off quite a bit. I plan on basing out of here. But put a spa in the basement. I kind of, being from Williston up there, there's a, every time I say we're going to put a spa in a building, I get a lot of good, a lot of good response. So we have a vision of putting a spa in the basement and putting a generator in the building. I know we had a lot of electric technical problems up in Williston and the weather was very harsh. So I want to be a part of it with our partners, having that structure be a somewhat of a beacon that rain or shine or sleet or night, that that'll be lit up and have it a place with a possibly nice little restaurant in it too, so it can be a kind of a hub and bring some value to the communities, would be my hope.
I have a question. What happens with the past vendors that have been working on the Elks building up to this point that haven't been paid? How does that resolve itself as the transaction goes forward?
Well, I'm putting up enough money. I'm assuming they're all going to get paid, Beaver. That's why I have a good counsel. But yeah, that's, I'm putting up, I don't have all those answers right here, but I've got counsel and a business manager that's looked at all that thing. But I'm assuming everyone's going to be current, aren't they, Beaver? They better be. You know, that would be details to follow. But yeah, we're an old line family that, we're not perfect, but after 115 years, we paid everyone all along. So I can speak in general terms that when we're here, they're going to be paid. And is that correct? Yeah, that better be correct. We're here, so that would be, that's the intent. I wish I could answer it in more detail, but I intend to pay everyone no matter where it is. I plan to pay, so details to follow, but...
I think that would, just to follow up to Mr. Altman's question, I think, you know, that would be the primary concern of the commission is that any of the debt against the building or any of the liens against the building, that through this transaction, those would all be cleared. And then of course, while great progress has been made on the building, it still isn't complete, so you would have the cost to complete, whatever that may be. But, you know, we would hope that, you know, you're very capable of, through this transaction, clearing up any debt, any liens and then being able to handle the cost to complete. We would certainly welcome that.
Let me look over my shoulder. That is correct. That's, that is, we've got a, that's part of the due diligence. That's, that is the intent. I understand, I respect that, yeah, that's...
I think the best thing that could happen here is, you know, if we can transition to a developer who is capable of doing all this, that would be a good thing for the building and be a good thing for the city and hopefully a good thing for the developers, both past and present. But that would be our primary concern.
That'd be my main concern, yeah.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
If this transaction is completed, what would be the picture of the new ownership? Would you be the sole owner? Is this going to be a partnership with Mr. Brinkman? Will he be completely out of it? What...
Well, no. We just talked about that earlier. Basically, I will have the top, the third floor. And our council will have the second floor and some conferences on the first floor. And the vision is to have, I've engaged a, we've been talking to a high-quality restaurateur person on the food service on that floor to be a tenant. And then we've also engaged and talked to some other, another party on the bottom floor to have a spa facility on the bottom floor. And I don't know how it's all broke down. Beaver, you'd be more eloquent than I if that would be of value.
Yeah, the project will, is being condominiumized. And so Tim is correct. His condo consists of the upper floor, law firm of the second floor and part of the first floor. And I will still have an investment in the balance of the first floor of the building. And then the spa on the basement is actually included with Tim's condo and there's storage for each one of the units in the basement also. So those are all condos.
We don't want to call the spa the basement, if that's okay. We're going to pick a better name than the basement.
I'm wondering...
Lower level.
I'm wondering more about the ownership while the balance of the development is taking place before the condominium aspect starts. What will that ownership be?
The ownership is transferred to Tim, to Tim's company.
So beyond your due diligence, which you said is 60 days or 90 days?
Forty-five.
Forty-five days. Beyond the due diligence and if you were able to move forward, what would you see the timeframe for completion then?
Upon the acceptance of this proposal and execution of purchase and sale, 90 days for the first and second floor. And then the third floor is scheduled at 120 days. And that's after the execution of those documents.
I think from our perspective, we need to do some due diligence also. You know, we essentially learned of this today. I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Brinkman at 11 o'clock this morning. I took some time this afternoon and Googled Mr. Quigg and everything you've said so far checked out on Google. But I think, you know, we would, we would want to do some due diligence just to make sure that we're dealing with a credible developer here. I don't doubt that we are, but I think the prudent thing is to do the due diligence. And also, we just a few minutes ago agreed to a contract with a separate attorney. We'll get some legal advice on how we should proceed. But I would think that once we have that and do some due diligence, we can move forward.
Thank you.
Comments, questions, again by...
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Quigg, have you previously been or now involved in any business or partnership or LLC with Mr. Brinkman?
No, no. But I've been, I am from Tacoma. And how I knew him, this is very ironic how it happened. I rented shortly a beautiful complex he has in Tacoma. I was in Dickinson two weeks ago at Kitty Corner, at that drugstore, at the nice little shop where the ladies have a kitty corner from the building. And I was talking about who has the Elks Club. I knew that was a jewel of a building. And I can't remember the name of the woman that runs the place. And, but she says, well, it's Brinkman. And I'm going, is his name Beaver Brinkman? Yeah, I know Beaver. He's from Tacoma. So I had a relationship with him on other projects in Tacoma. And that's no contractual agreement. But I'd been one of his properties have, which in Pierce County, Tacoma, is unequivocally the head and shoulders, the grandest of the properties in Tacoma that Beaver had done. So when I heard he was involved in it, I knew that, you know, I don't know all the backgrounds or all the, but in general, what he's built is of high, high quality in Tacoma. So it made me feel good about that structure before I even talked to Beaver. Then I called him afterwards and said, Beaver, I didn't know you were back in North Dakota. I knew Beaver from Tacoma, where we have our refinery. That's where I know him from. So no contractual, no, I don't have it. So I'm sure there's a lot of background and whatever going on behind the scenes. I'm kind of coming in at a disadvantage to all. But in general, what he did to Tacoma, that town, is in a tough economy, is pretty special. So I was honored to be a part of, I'd be honored to be a part of this Elk structure and hopefully in the future of this community.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I think, are we, are you two meeting with Mr. Kessel and I after the meeting to talk further about the due diligence and any other issues?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's almost 5 o'clock. I'll just report, as you heard me say, Mr. Kessel and I will meet with Mr. Quigg and Mr. Brinkman and try to establish just what we're going to need to start with here and information on Mr. Quigg and his business and doing our due diligence. And so if, if any of you commissioners have some suggestions on what kinds of information you would like us... you would like us to pursue prior to the end of this meeting, please let us know. It's 5 o'clock. We have a timetable agenda item. And this involves the Musket Corporation. And Chief Seavock is going to make that introduction for us.
President Johnson, commissioners, back in 2003 or 2004, the North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties approached our department with a request to consider developing a portion of our training site with industry-based fire props for the training of area volunteer fire departments and for the training of industry personnel. We thought that was a good idea and we began pursuing that. From that time forward, we've been developing a portion of our training site, which is known as the Williston Basin Oil Field Emergencies Training Center, located at the Dickinson Fire Department Training Site. You've heard me through the years, report on various aspects of that. Most recently, a North Dakota oil and gas grant for $93,500 to, to develop a live fire training prop of an oil storage tank. In addition to that, we have an oil treater prop. We have pipe flanges and piping. We have, in total, by the time we're finished with our project, we'll have, I believe, nine live fire props. There's not another training facility in the state of North Dakota that can say that. One of the things that's unique about what we've done out there is the majority of that has been done through grants and through support from the community and from industry. And in-kind support in, in material and labor from the city of Dickinson. Otherwise financially, all of what you see at that training site has been through grants and through donations, a considerable amount. And then a recent fundraising effort that we've undertaken is to help us enhance a portion of that training site. And they're all propane-fueled props. And a portion of what we need to do is we need to add a vaporizer to the propane tank that fuels these props. So we contacted various industry leaders, one of them being Musket Corporation, and asked for donations. Much to our surprise, Musket stepped forward with the entire amount that we were asking for. And in doing so, they will help us to finish this phase of this training site and actually complete another prop that's currently being looked at to be built and help us ensure safe and realistic training for area fire departments and for industry personnel. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Joshua Edge, Regional Manager for Musket Corporation. I believe that's correct, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, the City Commission members and residents of Dickinson. My name is, as Mr. Seavock said, I'm Joshua Edge. I'm the Regional Manager for Musket Corporation. Today, Musket is pleased to donate $14,000 to the Dickinson Fire Department to help with construction facilities and provide the highest levels of training to their volunteers. In multiple conversations with Chief Seavock, it's been known that the Dickinson Fire Department prides itself on being professionally staffed by volunteers. And we're proud to support the commitment to keeping the community safe. Musket has a strong working relationship with the Dickinson Fire Department and Chief Seavock over the last several years. And a large portion, portion of our success is due to the support of the City Commission, city departments and residents of Dickinson. We're thankful and proud to be a part of the community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Edge. Let's, let's give the corporation a nice round of applause. And perhaps you could just tell us a little bit about Musket Corporation, what, what you do and?
Sure, sure. Musket's been around 10, 12 years now. And we, we supply fuel throughout the country. We do a lot of rail maneuvers where we'll take fuel for, to, out of like the Gulf of Mexico, out of Houston, and we'll rail it into locations like Bonneville, Wyoming, the middle of nowhere, where maybe there's a economic, a community that's strapped and can't get fuel in. So they'll have to drive several hundred miles, thus driving up the, the market pricing. So what we'll do is we have innovative ways of, of getting into communities like that and, and, and developing rail sites. In North Dakota, we've kind of got a reverse of that. And because of the, the pipeline constraints that we have in the state of North Dakota, we were able to come in and use our innovative approach and basically reverse the process, thus railing crude oil out of North Dakota into other markets where they might be constrained on the pipe, so.
Okay. And do you have an office then here in Dickinson?
Oh, we do, we do. We have one, we actually started a little over three years ago on the east side of town and quickly outgrew that. And we're closer to the center of town now. We do have a small office down there where we employ 15 employees. And about 75% of them are actually local, which is kind of nice. They know the community, they know, they know their way around town, so. And obviously housing is, is a whole lot easier on them as well. So we've got a local one here and then we've also got another one in northern North Dakota, so.
What struck your interest in this project when the chief approached you?
It's kind of funny. I was a terminal manager in Arizona and we've done donations similar to this in the past. I was a volunteer firefighter for about five years. I've kind of, you know, close to my heart anyways, so. And Chief Seavock and I really kind of, in the last three years, really got to know each other well. And when he approached me, I said, hey, it's, something might be right up our alley, so it was.
Well, thank you very much.
No problem, so.
And where do you, where do you work out of? Where's your office?
I'm actually, I live in Boise, Idaho. And I'm here about every two to three weeks. And my area I control from Nebraska to the Pacific Ocean, so, I mean, a pretty good area.
Well, if you move your office here, I'm sure Chief Seavock would take you as a volunteer.
There you go, I'd be all over it.
Well, again, thank you very much and wish you much success.
Thank you.
Let's go down to 4D, which is Stark Development Infrastructure Grants. And... Mr. Kessel's going to report on that or introduce that.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioner. This item is related to the off-site improvements to support development in the North Industries area and north and west of there. It is a infrastructure grant that has been graciously provided by Stark Development to facilitate the construction of a sewer pipe to support the development that I mentioned earlier. They've made a motion in the amount of $438,000. That's the construction portion of the pipe itself. There are additional costs related to that pipe related to the design and some contingencies and such that will bring that cost up and beyond $500,000. What we're suggesting this evening is that the City Commission accept the grant and also apply some additional funds from our reserve balance to, to pay for that project as a whole. Since this commission agenda was created, there may be some, the pictures become a little bit clouded in that we're not sure if this pipe is, is going to become a reality. So what we'd like to do is just inform the commission tonight that the Stark Development was gracious enough to provide us funds, but that this project has become a little clouded and we have to clear that up before we can move forward. I should also mention that the Stark Development's grant is contingent upon the sale of a building that they owned, commonly referred to as the former American Express Building. So no action required on this, this evening. I'll try to take any, any questions, but we're, we're going to have to go back a little bit to the drawing board on this project specifically.
Can you elaborate on the cloudiness of this project?
The pipe itself traverses some land that, that, when constructed, allowed us to avoid the construction of a...
Lift station.
Lift station, thank you. And the land that that traversed, we don't, we didn't secure an easement across that land. And we're not sure that we can obtain that easement any longer. So in order to, to construct the pipe, we need the easement. If we don't get the easement, we may need a lift station instead. So we're, we're working through those issues. We hope to obtain the easement and the pipe will be constructed. But I can't affirmatively say that today. It might be in our best interest to have Attorney Coling work through a development agreement so that we can get that secured. And that's what we're going to pursue.
Okay. Any other questions?
What's the difference in cost associated with just being able to do the easement or having to do the lift station? Well, the lift station is something that would have to be designed. I can't tell you a cost, but what I can say is that it would have to be operated annually. So there'd be pumps, there'd be other mechanical systems that would require power. So that the costs alone for not avoiding a lift station are pretty high for the city because we would avoid all of those operational costs that, that come with a lift station. There's, there's more moving parts, so to speak, than there is with a pipe in the ground. So this is certainly advantageous for us to, to build a pipe that would drain naturally than construct a lift station instead.
Is there, Mr. President, is there a potential for the landowner of the ground that this pipeline would cross to benefit from its location as well?
I think a question like that is probably best answered by Engineer Sorin than myself.
President Johnson, Commissioner Jackson, there's definitely a benefit to the, the landowners that we're crossing with this sewer main. As part of the design and development of the project, it was looked at to try and, and mitigate any negativity that they would see looking for a potential future road design so it would fit within that, along a drainage ditch to, to try and help with future development of their property.
Thank you.
Where does the resistance come from? What is the big issue? Commissioner Oltman's, the landowner sold land prior. And that land was, there was a request to rezone that property at planning and zoning recently. And the landowner that owns the land we're trying to get the easement on isn't supportive of the rezoning request that was made. And so there's, they pulled then their approval for this project at this time. So until we can work through those issues, we hope to get it back on schedule, but I can't make that promise. Did that answer your question? Sure.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, this is just a report, no action then. And we'll move to item E, which are four or five things for Mr. Kessel to report on. I think maybe we can get a couple of those in before our 5:15 timetable agenda item.
Thank you, President Johnson, commissioners. The first item is an Energy Infrastructure and Impact Office Grant Application. We've talked a few times about legislation that has created a grant opportunity for oil hub cities, those being, of course, Minot, Dickinson and Williston. The amount of funding originally was about $35 million, a biennium to be split amongst those three. At the end of the legislative period, the law actually came out and the amount that'll be split is less than that. It's about $33.2 or $33.4 million. The reduction was due to a $5 million grant for schools that are experiencing impact, funding for the office, the, the grant office itself and funding for the Upper Great Plains Institute to do a second study. So that's, that's why the balance was dropped. What you see before you is an application that we have made for the wastewater treatment facility that we have recently hired Apex Engineering to design on our behalf. That project is expected to cost north of $20 million upon completion. And this grant was applied for $5 million, which would essentially be year one. We would have the opportunity to apply for a second grant in year two of the biennium. So we could use this project or any other that, that fits the legislative intent if we so desire. So the, the application has been made for $5 million for the wastewater treatment plant that we intend to construct. It's currently under design. If there's no questions, then the, the second item is just another report on the Western Wellness Foundation, the Title VI Grant. The commission agreed to be the fiscal intermediary for this grant if it was received. Western Wellness was pleased to receive notice that they, they did receive the grant. In fact, they got more funds than they originally anticipated. So this does mean that we will then act as the fiscal intermediary. There is no cost to the city of Dickinson to do so. We're simply a pass-through agent on this grant. But, but the Western Wellness was definitely pleased to not only get the grant, but to have us administer that portion for them, so. President Johnson, would you like me to stop at that point?
I would. It's 5:15 and, but I'll just ask, are there any questions or comments on that, that Western Wellness grant? Mr. Kessel, okay. But then it's 5:15, there is a public hearing scheduled. We'll have Mr. Sorin introduce that. And then, once he's done with the introduction, we'll consider the public hearing open.
Thank you, President Johnson, city commissioners. About three, maybe four years ago, we platted a piece of property known as the Horse Haven subdivision. And as, going through that plating process, we were working with the county on street right-ofways. And at the time, they had requested that we plat in the 75-foot of right-ofway for the street that is on the west boundary of the subdivision as well as the south boundary. About six months ago, the, probably when the tax statements came out, the owner of the property came and said that we had it wrong because he owned more land than, than what was shown on his statement as far as acreage. And we went through that discussion and he said that, you know, at the time, he didn't understand he was actually dedicating the right-ofway and he was giving away the land. So he went through with the vacation request, got the, the county to agree that they didn't need 75 feet of right-ofway, they just needed 33 feet. And therefore, they agreed to, to vacate 42 feet of the, the right-ofway on the west and the south property lines. We did take this to planning and zoning and reviewed it. With the, the county's approval, they're recommending approval of the vacation of the 42 feet of right-ofway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sorin. The public hearing is open. Anyone who wishes to comment regarding this issue may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? If no one from the public that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. And I would invite any comments from other city staff or city commissioners.
Mr. President.
Mr. Sorin, does this alter any way the road that's going up Water Tower Hill?
No, it does not. The, the original right-ofway was 33 feet on, on this, on this property's side of the section line. And the road falls within that original right-ofway. And this just takes us back to what the original right-ofway was.
So the servicing on that road is by the county up to land, probably halfway's down, which, and then the private owner?
Right, just up and around the corner there a little ways.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Sorin, at the last county zoning meeting, a plat was denied because it didn't have a 100-foot wide street right-ofway. That would seem to be in contradiction to what's happening here. Or am I wrong?
No, I would agree with your assessment. This was brought to us from the county though, saying they were okay with this vacation.
I only bring it up because it might be worth, the only reason we're involved is because it's in the ETZ, correct?
Correct.
Might be worth some more conversation with the county to make darn sure we know what we want. They know what, we know what they want, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We certainly could do that. I don't believe there's a time-sensitive issue to it, so I think that's certainly an option we can move forward with.
Well, I'd be fine with approving this if we've talked to the county and all, but it, there does seem to be some contradiction out there that we probably should straighten out.
What would you prefer? What would you prefer to do tonight, Mr. Sorin? Would you just assume we not act on this, and you talk further with the county? Or are you comfortable with us acting?
Well, I'm comfortable with the commission taking action on this. I have had discussions with the county, I think, three, maybe even four times, because of it being their request originally to go to this with, and them agreeing to vacate it. So I'm comfortable with the acting on it tonight. If we want to verify with the county and make sure, maybe we've got some planning and zoning commissioners and county staff that aren't on the same page, and so we could do that as well. But they were pretty adamant that they're okay with this vacation.
And I would add that it would seem that this much right-ofway is appropriate in this location. I think it's fine. I'm just pointing out the contradiction, just so we're communicating in the future appropriately.
Okay, any other discussion? What is the resolution number, Mr. Coling?
This would be Resolution 33-2011.
33, okay. Is there a motion regarding this item, then?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 33-2011 with the street vacation.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Olkmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kessel, we have a 5:25 timetable agenda item, but your report on oil impact staffing response is going to take more time than five minutes. The crew camp housing, do you think you can do that in five minutes?
Certainly. President Johnson Commission will skip to item four, then, crew camp housing process. And this report is related to new legislation that was passed this session, which enables cities to permit crew housing facilities, oftentimes called man camps. We met this morning as staff to discuss this ordinance and our response to that. What we hope to do is put together an ordinance for the commission to review and approve that would find a place for crew camps. We know they're coming. There is a place and a reason that crew camps exist. We all know about the housing crisis, as I'll call it, here in Dickinson. And we know that when the current drilling turns to the production side, that we will lose a certain amount of staffing when that happens. If that staffing is primarily located in crew camps, these camps can be dismantled, and the benefit to the city, then, is the infrastructure that would remain. So we are looking at where, within the city limits, we would like to see these types of facilities, if they do come. And we're looking at regulations as to how they should appear once they do come. I think it's safe to say that within the next few weeks, that we'll have a presentation before the city commission of our draft and our ideas and thoughts on how to regulate crew camps as they relate to Dickinson. I think one of the issues that is allowed is a permit fee. These are not crew camps. You cannot gain property taxes from the improvements that are made to the land, so you can use a permit fee to capture some of the expenses that a city incurs related to their existence. So we're reviewing that as well. That was also allowed as part of the legislation, so.
Is that an annual permit fee, or is it a one-time fee?
That is up to us, if we want to make these an annual. Our current thought process, which may change, is that we would do a five-year permit process because we would like to see the infrastructure, those costs be borne by the agency that would get permitted. So because of the cost of putting in water, sewer, and roads, we thought a longer permit period would be required so they can get some payback from that cost.
Also, since they'd be in city limits, we'd be responsible for fire protection, police protection, and they wouldn't be contributing any property tax for that. So we would have to, in our permit fees, capture expenses, our monies to cover those expenses.
That's exactly correct. And that's how we're designing currently. The permit fee is to be a replacement for property tax for services that normally would be covered by property tax. They, of course, would also be hooked up into city services, so the enterprise funds, they would have a utility bill.
Right.
So they'd be paying for those. But what they don't pay for is the services we provide through property taxes. So the permit fee would, what we envision is that would capture their fair share of services that we provide.
Okay. And that would capture the city's share, but that wouldn't capture, you know, the county or school, or, so we would be whittling it down to the portion of the property tax that we would normally receive.
President Johnson, Commissioner Olkmans, yeah, you are correct. We do have, the legislation does enable us to charge fees in addition, and then split those out amongst the other public entities or government entities that exist. You know, that is something that this commission would have to discuss. I can tell you, currently, our thought process is we cover the city's expenses, but we certainly can be open to other, capturing other expenses as well. Okay.
Personally, I would encourage you to do that. I, you know, I think, for example, parks and recreation, you know, they're probably going to use those facilities while they're here. You know, they're probably not bringing, since they're living in a camp, they're probably not impacting our schools quite to that extent. But there may be some county services that they do. So I think, you know, I would take a hard look at that and consider capturing some monies that we would then appropriate back to the other political subdivisions.
We could certainly do that. Some of these camps do provide with recreational facilities on site, but not all. And that's one of the issues that we have in this design process, is not, all crew camps aren't created equal. What they provide to the people that live there varies depending on the provider itself, so, but that is something we'll keep in mind.
Well, and I suspect the location, too, because if you're in a much smaller community, more rural location, the smaller communities probably don't have the range of amenities that Dickinson has, and so, you know, they're probably forced to provide those just because of that. But if they have a crew camp located here, we have, you know, several nice outdoor parks, our indoor recreation facilities, so there's lots for them to partake in. I mean, if they are into high school athletics, they take the games in. We have to mention DSU, since DSU president's here tonight, too. You know, they might take in some cultural events there.
It's a good suggestion.
But we're not going to share any money with DSU on this, so.
We'll sell tickets. This ordinance, then, is for a man camp that would be directly in city limits or even in the extraterritorial area, or just, how are you going to craft it?
That also, President Johnson, Commissioner Olkmans, that also becomes a topic we're going to have to discuss, is if it's in city limits, one of the requirements that we'd have, of course, is that it do connect to city services. If they are located in the extraterritorial zoning, that would be a little different because they would not be connected to city services. In fact, the way that this legislation was written, it allows the county to permit a crew camp inside our ETZ. They don't have to necessarily consult the city in doing so. So that's obviously something that we want to speak with the county commission on. But again, you know, as I said earlier, all crew camps aren't created equal, so a permit fee would have to keep that in mind as well, if they're not receiving city services. They're also, may not be receiving fire protection, police protection, and that, other than on a shared services contract or some of that, or a mutual aid contract.
Okay. Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
When I saw this item on our agenda tonight, I was hoping that we could maybe extend this conversation a little bit and talk about location. If we are approached, and I think it's inevitable that we will be, do we have druthers about a location for a crew camp, man camp? You know, proximity to a residential area, proximity to an area that's prime for development as a residential area. I don't know if you want to do that now, we can come back, and we're pushing a couple of public hearings here, but I think that some of these philosophical things, conceptual things, are important to discuss before we get somebody standing at that podium with a project presented to us.
I think we can come back to this in a few minutes. As you pointed out, we do have a
Sure.
Two more timetable items. Let's deal with those, and then we can come back to this discussion. It's a good discussion. We have a public hearing, it's at 5:25. It has to do with the utility easement vacation, and we'll ask Mr. Sorin to introduce this item, and then, when he's done, we'll have our public hearing.
Thank you, President Johnson. City Commissioners, we do have a utility easement vacation in Chicago's First Edition. It is a 10-foot easement on the south property line of Lot 3, Block 5. The property owner is proposing to build a structure on there, and this easement is in the way to do that. They have acquired all the utility easements permission, and they've all signed off on the vacation of this easement, and we're recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sorin. We'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment regarding this matter may do so. Step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. I would invite comments from commissioners or other city staff.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Sorin, I see there's an easement in Lot 2 adjacent to this easement. Does that have utilities in it?
It does have our streetlight wire within that easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Coling, I'm assuming this is number 34?
That's correct.
Okay. It's Resolution 34. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Move to approve Resolution Number 34-2011.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Olkmans?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It's 5:30. We have a timetable agenda item there, and that's to hear a report, the annual report on the Badlands Activity Center. And from Dickinson State, we have Dr. McCollum here. So, welcome, Dr. McCollum.
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the council. For the record, I am Dick McCollum. It's my honor to serve as president of DSU. It's a great pleasure for us to be here this evening and to provide you with the complete report on the Badlands Activity Center. I will make a few brief remarks to you as a council, and then I will introduce Ben Schreuer, who is the new events coordinator for the BAC, and then he will be followed by Kevin Thompson relative to the report from the foundation. Please know how very, very pleased we are to be able to bring you this report. We believe the Badlands Activity Center is a crown jewel for the community and for our campus, and it is something that brings great excitement. And I believe that when you hear the report this evening, you're also going to share in that excitement because there are so many wonderful things that have taken place. I would draw your attention to the separation between our discussion on the construction budget versus our discussion on the operations budget. Those are separate items. You recall the authorization for the $16 million construction budget. Later, you will hear where we stand on that, but I just am very, very happy to tell you that we have checked, we have double-checked, and we have double-checked our double-check. And we are standing under budget at this time. The numbers that I most recently looked at relative to the construction budget is 15.9, 15,903,000. So we stand under the authorized 16 million. You recall the package for the finance plan that the DSU Foundation put together for that 16 million included the $6 million pledge from you as a city commission, as well as the $10 million that is being raised through donations from businesses and individuals. And you will hear more about that from Kevin Thompson. We also have an operating budget, and we are getting ready to close our first year of operation on the BAC. And when Ben reports to you the progress on the first year of operation, I think you are going to be very, very pleased. I also draw your attention to the left-hand side of your packet, and you will see there a brief summary from the State Board of Higher Education meeting that was conducted last Thursday in Minot. I am very, very excited and pleased to be able to report to you, and you will see it highlighted there on that particular form, that the State Board of Higher Education has increased our authorization to work on the west campus parking lot. The west campus parking lot, as you know, borders the Ag Building, the Ag Arena, and the Badlands Activity Center. And what we are poised now to do with the authority from the State Board is to invest $1.1 million towards the improvement of that entire west parking lot area. You will also note in there that the authorization includes not only resurfacing with stripes being painted, but we also hope to put in some lighting systems in there so that we have some streetlights for a little better security in the area. That is a huge step forward, and I think, once we're able to move with this construction, it is going to enhance that entire west campus area, and certainly enhance our ability to provide support for a number of activities that are being conducted at the BAC. I also draw your attention on the right-hand side of the packet to a number of handouts that I leave with you for your reading pleasure. Please note the invitation in there to join us next week for the Business Challenge Social. You will also note in there the most current version of our quarterly newsletter with a number of exciting developments. And you will also note in there the color profile of our new Badlands Activity Center coordinator, Mr. Ben Schreuer. As I close my remarks, Mr. President, I wanted to personally thank you as a city commission for the support and the pledge that you made towards the construction of this great facility. I also want to publicly thank the hundreds of donors and businesses who have stepped forward in support of the campaign to raise the money for this facility. I also want to thank the State Board of Higher Education for their overarching support and endorsement. And I want to thank the DSU Foundation for putting together the finance plan that has made all of this possible. Mr. President, with your permission, I'll introduce Ben Schreuer, our new Badlands Activity Center coordinator, and he is going to provide you and the council with a complete update in terms of the first year of operation for this great new facility. Ben?
Thank you, Dr. McCollum, and welcome, Mr. Schreuer. Had the opportunity to meet you last Wednesday.
Thanks, President Johnson and Dr. McCollum. I want to thank all the commissioners for allowing me to present this evening, kind of an update on the past fiscal year at the Badlands Activity Center, and just give you an update on our schedules of events and a few other topics. So, again, I want to, I'm excited to be part of this community and to get involved at the Badlands Activity Center and Dickinson State University. I know my wife and I are really excited to be here, and the two months that we've been here, we've had, we've received a lot of open welcome and warmness from the community. We did find housing, we were very lucky to find a place to rent south of town, and everything's gone very smoothly with our transition, and it's been great to get to know a lot of the community members here and leaders in the community. So, from what I've seen of the facility so far, it's a beautiful facility, obviously state-of-the-art facility, and, you know, just all the coordination and effort that everybody put together to make that possible for the community and the high schools, and obviously, hopefully, in the region as well in the future. So I'm excited to be one of the faces and voices of the facility and be able to promote that for our community, and, you know, get a lot of activities in here and help things in that regard. So, first, I just want to give an update on the usership this past fiscal year as far as our rentals. The schedule I received, and then, from what I've scheduled since I've been here the past two months, we've had a total of 159 dates on the BAC schedule. So I know, in the past, I'd heard some numbers that kind of, some of the projections So, I know in the past I'd heard some numbers that kind of, some of the projections were 40 to 60 dates to have there at the BAC and obviously we far exceeded that amount with 159 scheduled dates. I'll kind of break those down for you. Within the 159, we had 31 sporting events at the Badlands Activity Center. 15 of those sporting events were football games this past fall. We had 10 track meets this past spring and then there were six other sporting events that we hosted there at the community that kind of associated with Parks and Recreation Center and a few other entities as far as sporting events. So, also within the 159 total dates, we had 101, which I've kind of classified as community and private events. And then we had 27 university events that was at the BAC as well. So, those two together bring up to 128 total university, community, and private events. And then if you break those down further, I've kind of categorized those, community and private events and university events into four other categories. One of the categories that I've kind of categorized is a category that kind of involves meetings, conferences, workshops, seminars, some training sessions for corporate organizations and different things. And we had 31 of those type of events, which again, like you said, included meetings and conferences, some other workshops. We also had 31 events that included some sort of a dinner, which could have been a banquet, a social. We've had birthday parties, wedding receptions there, and other events. So, that was 31 of those type of events. We've had 52 dates where we've had a local church here in town run out of the facility and have their church services there in the building. They're still looking to find a facility that they can officially call their home this summer and I think they're moving forward in that regard. So, here at the end of June, I think the beginning of July, they'll be hopefully being able to secure that spot. So, they've used the facility as well this past year. And then finally, we've had 14 other events in the facility that has included some charity events, Relay for Life. We've had the Southwest District Health, Kids Health Awareness Walk there. We've had some exhibits there. We had a spa sale there and a car sale. And then we've had a concert and a job fair and a few auctions, I believe, which was back at the beginning portion of the year. So, all in all, as you can see, the schedule's been very full with 159 dates last year and as here throughout my program, I'm going to kind of go through the football schedule as well and you can see that it's going to be a full fall season as well. So, update on the operating budget. We're doing very well on the operating budget. We're going to close out the fiscal year in the black. Our projections will be, will be about $60,000 in the black at the end of this fiscal year. So, we're operating, you know, far and above and doing well in the daily operations of the Badlands Activity Center. With that, we have decided, our Development Board on June 8th decided to create a long-term maintenance account. And so each year, at the end of fiscal year, our goal is to be able to move 50,000 from our operating account and move it into our long-term maintenance account for future long-term maintenance needs at the Badlands Activity Center. Obviously, we're going to need to replace the turf in the future and the track, do some striping and things like that. So, that's kind of where this money is going to be set aside. That way, we can have that available in the future. So, that is in progress as well at the end of this month to move 50,000 from our operating budget over into a long-term maintenance account. Next, I was just wanting to highlight a few things on the football schedule that was in your packet on the left side. As you can see, our 2011 football schedule, which I'm hoping to be able to release to the public here in the next few days, we have 15 dates scheduled this fall of football games and within those 15 dates, we have 19 football games scheduled. So, it's going to be a full fall season. Dickinson High School has four home varsity football games this year. Trinity High School has four home varsity football games as well. And then Dickinson State University is going to have five home football games at the Badlands Activity Center. Also, as you can see, we're gaining some public interest from some of the surrounding communities to host football games at the BAC. Actually, our first game this coming fall is going to be, the home team is going to be Richardson-Taylor against Newtown and that's going to be on August 23rd. So, that's one of the interests, many interests that we've had from outside schools, to be able to host games on the field. And then one of our premier events this fall is going to be on August 27th, which is a Saturday. We've scheduled our first nine-man high school jamboree, football jamboree, that's going to include five football games that Saturday. So, we're going to start at 9 o'clock in the morning with Mont Regent versus Partial. Then we'll go at 11:30 that day, which will be heading here Scranton versus Centerville. 2 o'clock in the afternoon on August 27th, we'll have Central McLean versus Beach. 4:30, we'll come back with Bowman County versus Divide. And then at 7 o'clock at night, we'll finish off with Trenton Trinity Christian versus Shiloh. So, it's going to be a busy day, but it should be a great day for the community and the region to come together and see a lot of high school football and support their teams throughout the day. So, we look forward to having that event at the Badlands Activity Center along with all the other games this fall and we're going to invite the community to come out, take part of the excitement and the action. We do have our Blue Hawk suite in the Badlands Activity Center, which is for rent during some high school varsity games. So, if we have members of the community and obviously the city council here that's interested in renting out that suite, you know, feel free to contact me and I can get you availability on dates and things like that. So, we do have that suite that will be available, obviously during our high school jamboree and then some of the open Dickinson and Trinity High School games that, that suite is not occupied. The next thing I would like to kind of announce is I've scheduled our first family movie night, which is going to be at the Badlands Activity Center on Saturday, July 16th. This is going to be kind of an outdoor movie night event. We're really excited about this. We're going to play a movie on our Hawk Vision video board and, you know, obviously invite the community to come and anyone that wants to come and watch a video outside, we'll be able to have some seating on the football field and in the bleachers and just kind of give you that outdoor drive-in movie-type atmosphere and we're hoping for good weather. So, again, that's going to be July 16th at 7:30 PM and the movie we're going to play is The Incredibles. It's kind of an older movie. It's a, I think, a Disney animated movie that I'm sure a lot of kids here in the community have seen. It's a well-rounded movie for families to get together and watch. So, we're excited for that and, you know, want to kind of get that information out there, try to get the public together and, you know, enjoy the facility as we watch a movie as well. And then finally, I would just like to encourage everyone to continually keep an eye on the Badlands Activity Center website. I'm trying to do some updating to that and make sure that our calendar of events that is on that website is up to date and current. That way, if people want to know, you know, what's going on from week to week and month to month there, you can, you know, go online and look at that schedule and see what events are coming up and, you know, the schedule for football games and track meets next spring and other activities that we're going to have there. So, that's why I encourage everybody about that and try to keep up to date. There'll be some information all placed on theirs as the year goes on. So, with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions that you guys might have. And again, want to thank everybody for being able to report, you know, on the last fiscal year, or actually the first full fiscal year of the Badlands Activity Center. So, any questions?
Mr. Schreuer, I've heard you say that you're new to the community. Maybe you can tell us where you came from and...
Yes. Born and raised in Ohio, Urbana, Ohio is the town I'm from. I know there's a lot of good information here in the Faces of DSU article that was written by the foundation. Urbana, Ohio is a small agricultural community, so I kind of feel at home coming out here, you know, with all the farming and agriculture and openness of the community. So, my wife and I previously lived in Dayton, Ohio, a suburb of Dayton, which was in Centerville. So, it was a little larger than where I grew up, but born and raised in Ohio, that's where both of our families are from and this is, I guess, a little adventure for us to come out here by ourselves and, you know, kind of branch out and try to get established, so.
Well, maybe you can work with Dr. McCollum. You can get Dickinson State and Ohio State scheduled.
Yeah. They're in a little bit of a bind though right now.
Yeah, they are.
It'll be interesting to see how that plays out, so.
Well, we have two expectations, one that you operate, continue to operate in the black, and two, no Dickinson team lose in the...
All right.
It's just too simple an expectation.
I'll do my best to keep on both of those, so.
Ben, the facility is open as well for people that want to walk the track?
Yes.
And that opens from, is it?
It's, the track in Fisher Field, or Huffman Track in Fisher Field are open to the public during daylight hours for, you know, walking, running, and exercise routine. So, we ask the public to enter on the east side of the facility, which is through 13th Avenue, I believe. There's a turnstile gate that automatically, you know, turns on during daylight hours and then it'll close down when it gets dark. So, it's easy access. There is also a public restroom that's available to the public under the south side bleachers of the facility. If you just go up under the vomitory ramp there, as you get up underneath on the south side, there's a public restroom to use. That's open, you know, and the facility's open as well, so.
If somebody wants to talk to you about the possibility of scheduling an event, how do they get ahold of you?
Yeah. The best number to reach me as far as scheduling is 483-1918, 483-1918. And then, you know, I'm there. My office hours are usually 8:00 AM till sometimes late at night depending on the event that we have going on. So, feel free to call anytime. I do give facility tours if someone hasn't seen the facility since, you know, we've done some changes in the high school locker rooms, put some lockers in and things like that. So, you know, if anybody wants to stop by for a tour, feel free to give me a call and I'd love to, you know, show them around and, you know, show them what facility they have to use, so. Any other questions?
Mr. Kessel has one.
Mr. Schreuer, I just wanted to mention that President Johnson and I did an interview with some reporters from Governing Magazine and they were doing it on the oil impacts both in Williston and in Dickinson. They were very impressed when I brought them around the community, showed them a few things. We did stop at the BAC, we walked the track a little bit and everything. They were very impressed that a community of our size would have an amenity such as that. So, watch for the Governing Magazine, there may be reference to the BAC.
Okay, great. And, you know, there has been a number of oil companies that have used our facility already for corporate meetings, employee training, safety training. So, you know, it is being used by those, you know, those entities and, you know, to fit their needs and, you know, we're there to help them, so. All right. With that, I will have Mr. Kevin Thompson come up from the foundation and report on the donations and pledges.
Well, welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Here's an old face.
That is true. Haven't been here in a while. Kevin Thompson from the Dickinson State Foundation and glad to be in front of you today. Just have a brief update in regards to the cash and pledges to date as of June 20th. And we've raised right at $15,200,000. We've received of that, we've received in cash and stocks 9.9 million. We have outstanding pledges of 5.3 million. We have about $20,000 that is left to pay, reimburse the university for expenditures for the construction of the project and our goal is to work with the university by June 30th to close out the books on the constructions. We don't have to worry about construction payments anymore and then we're just working with the loan side of it. I just wanted to remind everyone that the DSU Foundation financed a project, as President McCollum said. The original loan that we did take out was 9.2 million dollars. As of today, our payable is 7.7 million dollars. And of that 7.7 million, we have a fixed rate at 5.8% and what is still payable on that is 4.9 million. And then the foundation was able to utilize the variable rate through Wells Fargo and that is currently at 1.1% interest, so potentially very, very low interest. And we have 2.8 million dollars. The variable rate loan that we do have allows us to prepay as much as we possibly can to pay off as quickly as we can as pledges are paid. And so, that is what we're doing, is working that down. That variable rate began at 4.2 million, so to be at 2.8 after a year and a half is very incredible. The one thing, when we look at all of our pledges and those type of things, we've had one pledge that has not been paid and that pledge was worth $25,000. So, if you look in the big realm of things of $15 million, our pledge is receivable and we put on our books 2% would not pay of the total sum. So, we're far ahead in meeting those goals. We do make payments twice a year, July 15th and January 15th, and so we do have our next loan payment coming up here in about 15 days. Fundraising continues to go and we are looking to raise that additional dollars. It's always been our goal and the national economy has not been as kind in trying to secure large donations and those type of things and so, but we are having conversations and our goal is to secure the funding for this project long-term and get it going. So, that is basically where we're at, as Ben has shared with you. All the suites have been taken. You know, the last suite was occupied in October of last year, so there's 14 suites, 342 club seats, and then the general admission seats that are available. And so, people are utilizing the facility in a wide variety of areas. So, that, that's the financial update from the foundation and open for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good report by all three of you. Appreciate you being here and sharing the information with us and with the public. Well, we'll go back then to our previous discussion and we were talking about crew camp housing and Mr. Jackson had just raised the issue of location and I bet Mr. Kurtan has something to say about location of crew camps.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, fellow Commissioners. I've looked at the idea of locating crew camps maybe around the city. I thought that it would be appropriate maybe if we located one to the north. I guess the question still remains, can we regulate inside of our ETC or extraterritorial zone? It appears, just first glance, looking at the regulations, that we would not have that opportunity. But if it's inside of our city limits, it'd appear probably to the north. I would strongly suggest that we have a significant portion on our east side of the city, towards the Interstate 64, the off-ramp of 64, we already have industrial. This could provide, if they, this would provide urban services whenever they developed. It would also be an economic development for the city after five years whenever a crew camp went away. So, I would strongly suggest that we would have portions to the east side of the city along our existing industrial areas and potentially one to the south. As part of the ordinance, I think that instead of designating by zoning districts such as industrial or agriculture, I feel that we should probably move forward with specific locations as part of the ordinance where the city council would ultimately adopt or where you would feel comfortable of locations within the city and possibly within the extraterritorial zone if we have that ability to regulate where those crew camps could be. I think that that's probably the best way of doing it, to specifically address locations instead of just going across the board for designated zoning districts where all the zoning districts, no matter their location, any location within that zoning district potentially could be a crew camp facility. So, I think that probably designating specific lands or specific sites is probably the best for that. That would be my suggestion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Kurtan, a crew camp proposal in the ETZ would require rezoning, would it not? And perhaps platting?
With respect to your question, Commissioner Jackson, I would look at this as similar to a special use permit, which would not require rezoning. It would be, we would set up a specific ordinance either in the zoning, either in our zoning, zoning regulations section of the municipal code or another section. And this would be a specific permit. It would not require rezoning because we would specifically state where it would need to go. It wouldn't have to follow along zoning district boundaries because we would specifically refer to a map and we would also have the description of where those locations should be.
Okay. But I guess the point is there would have to be some approval, even though the legislative permitting process may not apply, there would still be some city approval process for a crew camp?
Absolutely. I would strongly suggest that it would either run comparable to what we have as a special use permit where you go to Planning Commission, get a recommendation, and then proceed to city council, or it could be strictly a criteria in which we establish such as maybe additional buffering, how we address the temporary nature of the parking lot and access roads, a reclamation plan, bonding for the reclamation plan after all said and done of how they would either bring the site back to its existing or natural state or part of the reclamation plan would be maybe the second phase of that project would be turning it into industrial or whatever use. And then the bond... And then, the bond would ensure that if somehow the economy went south and they weren't able to fulfill their requirements of removing it, we would at least have that ability to pull the bond and remove it and bring it back to its natural state.
Mr. President, I bring this up because, you know, we're going to have a lot of questions in the next few years about trying to manage the growth in our community, try to do it in a quality way, try to keep our community with curb appeal that I think we've been told for many years that we have in Dickinson. I have a question as to whether or not a crew camp is really compatible with, for example, good residential development. And if we see a proposal that brings a crew camp to an area that may be prime for residential development, I think we have to look at that pretty hard. We don't know what will happen yet, but, and I don't know how the rest of you feel. I'm not saying it necessarily has to be in an industrial area, but I do think it's a significant question that we should try to look ahead with before we get a proposal.
I have a question, I guess. As you've been looking at kind of our master plan for the city of you and your mind, come up with some areas that would be appropriate?
If we are limited, with respect to your question, Commissioner Olmert, if we're limited to be within the city's boundaries, I would feel the east side of the city where we have our industrial makes sense for it. You already have urban services, it'd be a natural extension of those urban services. It would also, after all said and done, in five years, it would enhance the industrial expansion upon that area. I think that a project, an industrial expansion to the east makes sense to me. Along some portions, probably to the east of where we have our mobile home area and the southeastern portion of the city, that might be a good area to look at. I was hoping that we could maybe regulate within our extraterritorial zone and then I would suggest probably maybe to the west of, northwest of where Northern Industries would be, we have some areas there that potentially could work for that. You know, the idea behind it is this is transitory, it's going to be there two to five years or whatever requirement the city council would come up with. That would provide urban services to the area which would enhance them to, or at least move forward for possible developments in those areas. Another suggestion that I've had and would be, and this is kind of off the subject a little bit, would be potentially allowing employee housing in our commercial general and also our industrial zones within the same facility or building that they're having. I mean, that would be another option to help alleviate the housing shortage that we do have. If we did that, and that's something I'll be discussing with the planning commission on trying to formulate some policies for that that would work. A suggestion would be that all the entrances would come through the main entrance so that you would prohibit the chance, or at least eliminate the chance, that they would be running to the public. The key on that is that a structure like that would need to convert over time and have to have that ability to either convert from employee housing to office use or storage. That's why it needs to stay within the primary structure instead of being off to the side. That's another idea to address this issue in addition to the one that we're talking about tonight.
Additional comments, questions? I guess I like your idea on the crew camp that in our ordinance we be site-specific as opposed to kind of zoning-specific. I think that's a good idea and I, for one, would encourage you as you, you know, draft the ordinance that you include that aspect in it.
I guess I especially like the bonding component that he put in as well so that we're not left holding the bag if it doesn't go to term as well. So, a lot of good foresight on that.
So, I really do encourage you to work on this. Again, it's much better to have more of these details thought out and planned out before we have the first request. So, I think it sounds like we're ahead of the curve a little bit here.
I agree.
Okay. So, Mr. Kessel, do you want to go back then to the oil impact staffing response that you've included then here?
Thank you, President Johnson. And commissioners, the next item then is the staffing response to oil impacts. And you have a document that was penned for you to consider. We're not expecting action this evening, but at least consideration and maybe answer some of the questions. First thing I tried to do in developing this document was look at what's going on in our community in terms, or more specifically, what's going on within the staffing side of the city of Dickinson. We've gone through, and then compared that to the previous couple of years. In 2009, we went through 12 hiring processes. And the reason that I used hiring processes is sometimes we have to go through a hiring process more than once for the same position, depending upon how many applicants we had. We might extend an application period to try to get more applicants, things such as that. So, in 2009, we had 12 of those. In 2010, we had 22, almost a twofold increase. In 2011, we've had 18 already this year. So, we're on pace to do well over 30, maybe even close to 40. As you have that amount of turnover in a staff of around 120, that's pretty significant. That means you're changing over about a 30-year staff a year. And that, they leave then with all of the institutional memory that they've acquired. So, it can be difficult to recover from a loss of somebody who's been here especially for a great deal of time. Not only are we hiring more often, but the applicants that we're receiving aren't of the same quality as we've had in the past. We went back and reviewed some of the scores that are received by our applicants. We establish a committee during each of these hiring processes who then takes all the material that's been submitted by the applicant and they score it against a pre-established set of criteria. The goal, of course, is to try to have the best match. And once they're scored, the top seven go to the supervisor in charge of hiring for interviews and completing the process. It's interesting to note that right now, the average high score is the lowest we've seen in three years. And more alarming may be the fact that on the low score side, so in other words, applicant seven, basically what their average score is, is gone down by over 10% in one year. So, the quality of the applicants that we are getting has declined in terms of matching up with the skill set that we're trying to match that person to. The other thing I wanted to point out was the average applicant per process or per advertisement has dropped. In 2009, we had 21 applicants for every advertising process. In 2010, the average was 18. And this year, the average is 13. There are seven times that we want, our ordinance allows if we have less than seven applicants to simply forward those to the supervisor and not even score them. That's happened already seven times in 2011. So, the number of applicants has been seven or less for a great many of those 18 positions, almost half. So, you know, the unemployment in Stark County is about 1.7% as of April. It's traditionally been very, very low going back several years. So, the pool of applicants is small. The skill set that is applied for our positions in the past is declining. So, how do we counteract that trend? This year, the city commission authorized us the use of hiring bonuses. And in some regards, that has helped. Our police department is fully staffed at this time. They are looking for help in the dispatch area, but we are happy to say that there are no openings in our police department. So, there may have been some benefits of doing that process, but I don't believe it's enough anymore. So, what do we do about it? What I've proposed then is a three-pronged approach as to how to address this problem. The first is a cost of living increase. And if you look at our sister oil hub cities of Williston and Minot, according to Spurling's website, our cost of living is higher than both of those communities and by about 5%. And the main reason out of all those factors that go into figuring out cost of living is housing. We were 16% higher than Minot and 12% higher than even Williston in our housing cost of living index. So, that is driving a great deal of the reason why it's more expensive to live in Dickinson. I then quote some statistics for you on average costs of rent. We've talked about that at this meeting several times, that the skyrocketing rentals in our area has made homeownership and sometimes even apartment rentals out of reach for many Dickinson residents. So, that's the, the proposal then is a cost of living increase to help all of our current staff, all permanent, part-time and full-time members with a 3% cost of living increase. That would begin in August of 2011, assuming all of these are under the assumption that the funding stream identified is approved and we qualify for. And I'll go into that in a little bit. The next option then, or next approach is new positions. The reason you do the COLA first is hopefully that will move our scale and get some of our new positions that we'd like to request into that realm of reasonability for people to apply. We've had a increase in utility accounts, especially solid waste. While the number of solid waste receptacles has gone up from 14,806 in 2009 to over 15,336 in 2011. We've done those, that level of increase without a staff increase. And every solid waste receptacle is not created equal. If you have a business or a commercial account, you may have an eight-yard dumpster that has to get dumped six times a week as opposed to a residential dumpster that's on a weekly process. So, not only has the number of receptacles gone up, but the type of receptacles has gone up as well in requiring then more trips, especially on the commercial side. So, that's just one area where we'd like to suggest the hiring of a solid waste operator to counteract the amount of time it takes to deal with all of those increased receptacles. Another would be on our street side. We've added a great many streets, will continue to add streets as the number of platted lots increases. And it takes staff, of course, to clear those streets, to patch those streets. And we believe that the level of service that we're offering today is not the level of service that we were offering a year or two ago. And we'd like to get back to the standard that our residents appreciate and expect out of our, from our city services. We'd also like to point out, and you've heard this statistic before from our police department, that the number of tickets that are being issued, whether they, or touches, I'll say, with our community, whether they be from a criminal standpoint, a parking or traffic, has gone up. I believe it went up over 800 calls for service from last month to the year prior, judging the same month, over month. So, we'd like, or I'm suggesting that we hire a police officer as well. And I believe that the statistics that we've provided to you are only going to increase, meaning the need for these positions is going to increase. So, the suggestion would be a solid waste operator, a street maintenance operator and a police officer at this time. And then, the last or third prong of the approach is a market-based pay. What we've noticed is that CDL drivers are very difficult to come by. We have a great many positions that require CDLs and they are being impacted the most, especially those positions at the entry-level portion of our job scale, the operator level especially. We've actually had some of our operators out on duty collecting solid waste be pulled over and asked if they wanted a job from another company. So, they're actively being recruited by other companies. They are a hot commodity. Job Service has ranked CDL drivers as the fastest-growing job within North Dakota and they expect that to stay there until 2018. So, there's going to be a persistent conflict or competition for CDL drivers. How do you deal with that then? The pay in the oil field, we can't approach. We don't expect that we're going to approach that, but we do have to at least offer a wage that we think is, will attract and retain members to our community. We did a review of our sister cities, our sister oil hub cities in Minot and Williston. We also tried to obtain data from North Dakota Department of Transportation and Stark County to assist us with establishing what is a market value. And we just had gone through a very similar process last year. But things have changed and with the addition of Minot as a sister hub city, it's obvious that our wages are not attracting the people that we hope. So, what we're proposing is that in selected positions that require a CDL, such as the water utility side, the operators and senior operators, the street side, same the operators and senior operators, and on the solid waste side, operators and senior operators, that we do a market-based pay adjustment. What that means is, we review the dollar figure that would get them to market and then pay them on a monthly basis, separate from their regular checks, an hourly equivalent to that market-based pay. So, in other words, for operators, if it is $2 an hour, they would receive, if you work 160 hours in a month, you would receive $320 that month. For senior operators, it would be a dollar an hour, 140 hours average a month, $140 then would be their check each month until our funding stream, as long as our funding stream allows. The funding source that I'm suggesting that we use is one that has been authorized by the state legislature. We're already receiving a half a million dollars based on this funding stream. They've created a tier, a multi-tier process where if 2.5% of the positions within your community are mining-based, you are eligible, and you have to have a population that exceeds 10,000, you're eligible for $500,000. We are eligible for that, we are receiving those funds. If you can, if your mining positions exceed 7.5%, you get an additional half a million dollars. We currently don't exceed 7.5. We were at 6.2 at last report. The city of Williston does receive the extra, the second-tier funding of a million. So, it appears to be within our reach. The next time that they will review this is July. So, we should know in July if we are eligible for this extra half a million dollars. Most, if not all, of the state funding that has come back to the city of Dickinson to help us with oil impacts is used for, or required to be used for capital infrastructure or capital needs. The oil impact grant that we reported earlier at this commission meeting, they're looking at capital infrastructure. This is one of the few grants or few funding opportunities that we have to look at operating expenses as a funding mechanism to cover those operating expenses. So, that half a million dollars would cover the costs of this proposal as I've outlined it. The cost of living increase would be an expense of about $167,000 annually. And the new positions would be about $130,000. And then, the market-based pay adjustment would be about $51,000. Now, these would all be midterm, if you approve, would be midterm adjustments. So, those expenses wouldn't be that high in 2011. But assuming we continue to be eligible for these funds, those would be the total expenses for 2012. The proposal does discuss an adjustment each year, that market, as we've compared, will adjust each year. So, we'd review all of these items to make sure that we continue to be in a competitive environment, or hiring environment. So, that's a brief overview. So, that's a brief overview. I know it's a lot of information that was provided in the documents. I'd love to take any questions that you may have. This is a document that we reviewed with the executive team many times. There was many options considered. I understand that it may not meet all of our staffing requirements' needs, but it was the best proposal we felt we could bring forward and accomplish our goal of getting more staff to meet the needs of our residents. So, with that, I'll take questions.
Mr. Kessel, the market adjustment for the CDL, you said it would not, in your memo, that it would not be affected by overtime. In the private sector, I'm reasonably confident we couldn't do it this way. We'd have to put it in the rate, pay overtime on it. I know there are some different rules for political subdivisions from time to time, but have you checked this out with the State Department of Labor?
I've not specifically called the Department of Labor to find out, but that's certainly a call we can make.
Yeah, you know, in the private sector, we wouldn't be allowed to kind of move that off to the side and say that rate of pay is exempt from overtime. They wouldn't allow us to do that. So, I would check that very carefully. But to me, if it was subject to overtime, that wouldn't be a game killer at all. In general, I personally support the positions you've taken here in the memo, but you want to make sure you get, if we do this, that you get that right.
And I want to make sure, I'm clear, President Johnson and Commission, that the market-based pay, the hourly amount that's quoted here, is not a base pay adjustment. It's not, if one of our staff is making $14 an hour, they're not going to make $16 an hour when they get this adjustment. They'll continue to make $14 an hour. What we'll do is, in a separate check, pay them the amount of hours worked times a $2 figure, almost in terms, I truly tried to stay away from using the word bonus, but that's essentially.
That's the thing, in the private sector, we couldn't do.
You couldn't do.
You would, because as soon as you run into an overtime situation, in your example, the overtime rate of pay wouldn't be $21, you know, 14 times one and a half, it would be $24, 16 times one and a half. Again, I know political subdivisions have their own, kind of, some different labor laws applied to that, but if it was in the private sector, I'm confident that you'd have to just put that into the base pay. You may have to do that here. Personally, I have no objections to that.
Okay.
You know, it's just as long as you, you know, you note that that's that way, and that someday that market adjustment may go away too, if, again, as Mr. Corton referred earlier, if things go south on us here, so.
We'll certainly check that out.
I guess I have some questions. As you outline this, you're recommending that we hire an additional solid waste operator, one street maintenance operator, and a police officer. That's your recommendation, right?
That's correct.
Are you going far enough? You know, when you look at the street maintenance operation, I know that as a city, we average 40 miles per employee, and our sister cities are averaging 20 miles or 25 miles per employee. And so, when you do your synopsis, you're stating that having a city employee will give us better chances for quality control, for snow removal, cleaning streets, et cetera. How will one employee impact it? What ratio does it bring it down to when we add the one employee?
Commissioner Olman, I didn't figure out the ratio as you've presented it, but this is a mid-year, proposed to be a mid-year change. I honestly believe that Engineer Soren will bring forth a budget, or during our budget process, will bring forth a proposal that will increase staff as well. Certainly, Mother Nature has not been very kind to us in the winter season the last three years, but we could address some of those increased staffing regarding snow removal at that time.
So, in our new budget session? So, this all goes on our current budget?
Correct. This is, these are 2011 adjustments. And our 2012 budget that will start, begin that process is separate and distinct from these.
One more question, and maybe I'm not looking at this quite right. When I look at the wastewater fund financial report and the solid waste fund financial report, and I'll take the solid waste where you're looking to add one more employee, our revenues went up almost $200,000, and our expenses dropped by almost $300,000. So, it's a $500,000 swing in that department. Certainly, our employee expense didn't drop by $300,000, but our revenues are increasing. Have you looked at the revenue increase as far as how it's going to fund these positions as well?
Commissioner Olman, there's certainly many ways that we could use existing revenue streams to fund additional staff. And I'm certainly open to doing that. As I said, I think Public Works Director Engineer Soren will propose that as we move The reason that we use the funding stream that I've identified is there may be a point in time that it does go away. And when that does, because it's based on mining positions, that's likely to indicate that we've experienced a downturn in that segment of our economy, which at this time is fueling a great deal of our growth, if not most of our growth. So, it's a natural funding stream then to use and to review these positions once that funding stream goes away. We can say, now is the time that we have to address all of those things that were addressed using this funding stream. I do expect additional staffing requests from pretty much every department during this next 2012 budget. So, more is probably going to be coming to you, more in terms of requests and staff, very shortly.
So, this is the short-term fix for this year's budget that we're finishing out to wrap up where we're at right now?
Exactly.
Okay.
On the solid waste position, you wouldn't necessarily have to fund that with oil impact funds if there is sufficient revenue being generated by the solid waste fund to cover it?
President Johnson, you're entirely accurate. There are funding streams that would fund many of these positions differently than what I've proposed here. That is one of them. It is rare for us to get an opportunity to use funds from the state for operational expenses, and I've outlined why, is when these monies go away, and my guess is eventually they will, it provides us the prime opportunity to review the needs that they've fulfilled during the term of their use.
My feeling would be that should you, should we be fortunate enough to receive an additional $500,000, that really that be used to fund the increased expenses in the general fund. I have no problem with, you know, if we need additional employees in our enterprise funds, really to fund those with enterprise revenues. I think we have the ability to do that. I think where we have an issue in the enterprise funds is when we're faced with a significant project like we are with the solid, or the wastewater treatment facility. There, we definitely do need other sources to deal with that impact. Otherwise, it's just too costly, you know, for the monthly payers. But to pick up an additional employee in the solid waste fund, I don't think our users would notice much of a difference in their rates at all to fund that. So, that would be, I would encourage you to do it that way. You're going to have, I think, more demands on your general fund than that additional $500,000 will cover. You know, I suspect when you get into the, shortly get into 2012 budgeting scenario, it's not going to be only Mr. Soren coming for additional employees that are paid for out of the general fund, but there will be others, whether it's, you know, additional police or fire or administrative staff. There's going to be quite a bit of demand here.
I certainly agree with that, and I also am concerned with our rate structure the way it is. We're going to have significant pressure on that as well, in paying for the wastewater treatment plant. We haven't seen yet the results from the landfill study that's coming. We've had on our back burner a public works building that's been out there for at least three years. So, there are significant projects that are going to impact our funding, or our rates as they exist today. But that is definitely a funding stream that we could use for the solid waste position that I've outlined.
I think, you know, another legislative session starts in a year and a half. We're going to know even more about the oil impact. And, you know, a community like Williston was kind of ahead of the game in terms of being impacted. I think the impacts of the energy industry came to Dickinson a little later, and perhaps to Minot as well. I think there will be much, much more pressure on the legislature a year and a half from now to increase that $33 million fund price significantly, because there's no question the political subdivisions in western North Dakota are under a lot of economic stress right now due to energy impact. And I know the legislature did a lot, but I think there's going to be more that needs to be done, and especially with these three oil hub cities. They're bearing a lot of the burden here. So, we'll have an opportunity, I think, to lobby more, and if things are still going well in terms of production and price, the state is going to have significant resources at its disposal. So, I don't think we should kind of, that $33 million, that's a two-year commitment, and I think that's the way we should view that.
So, Mayor Johnson, your suggestion is again to take the money that we're going to have and put it in the general fund where we can, and self-fund these positions if we're able to pull that money from that department?
Absolutely. I mean, to me, it would be kind of a last resort to pull money from the oil impact fund here for the solid waste or the water fund to kind of fund personnel.
Especially when you've seen an increase in revenue in those two areas too.
If it's to fund projects, you know, then I, that's a different deal, because the projects again can be quite large, quite significant. But we're going to have, the legislature has not allocated much monies towards the softer costs, like, you know, the special cost of living, or trying to identify the costs, you know, additional costs for CDL operators or additional staff. They've just kind of made the assumption that our additional properties will cover that, you know, the additional, new properties, property tax will cover that. It really, it really doesn't. Now, we're going, it'll help when we get these commercial properties that eventually get built and be within the city limits. That's going to help us. But I fear that we're still going to be short on the soft-cost side. And, you know, we're going to deal with this in a few minutes too. The development impact fee project, it's a good project. I really think is, we're going to be faced with kind of increasing our own self-imposed limits there. You know, we need to, we need to keep dealing with the housing issue. So, we have to fund that from someplace. We, you know, we've already moved a million dollars from our half-cent sales tax fund into that impact fund. We're still at a negative. We're going to see more drawdown on funds we've already approved. So, without taking any action to fund that between now and the end of the year, I would suspect that's going to be a fairly large negative number by year-end. So, you know, I think realistically, we're looking at two places to fund that, and that would be some of that additional sales tax money, or possibly loaning money from the future fund into the impact fund. And I think we could finance the impact fund that way. But if we take sales tax money, that limits the amount of infrastructure and property tax reduction that we can do with the general fund with that. And I might, if I remember correctly, I think this year, we're moving $600,000 of sales tax money into the general fund for property tax relief.
Mr. President, you know, I certainly, I really agree with the comments about hiring staff, using the enterprise funds, but I think we do need to keep in mind that we've leaned on those enterprise funds, I think, pretty hard for capital improvements over the years. And I think that pressure is going to really increase the next two, three, four years. The whole conversation might be a six of one, half a dozen of another kind of thing with the budget overall. I don't know. In concept, I really agree, but we are really going to have to look ahead to see where we're going to fund some of these, some of these capital improvements that I think are maybe riding under the radar a little bit, with extension of water trunk lines, sewer collectors, some street collectors, those kinds of things, that we don't know for sure how we're going to finance those things yet. I think we really have to be careful, we need a balance, but we have to be careful not to be too conservative in hiring staff. That's what's going to really keep our, one of the key things, in keeping our community a quality community. So, we really need to watch that, make sure we've got the people we need to keep our community that way. Probably a lot of people watching TV right now that are really interested in this topic, topic of salaries and whatnot, and I think we all have to remind each other that all you have to do is open the Dickinson press and look at the tremendous competition out there in hiring, signing bonuses, the wages that are being paid. I think most people recognize that, but that's why we're having this conversation, is because of that competition. Every business in this town, in western North Dakota, is feeling that. Might be an obvious statement, but I think we need to remind our citizens and each other about that competition. That's why we're talking right now. This is a good start.
Yes. Does anyone here have like a fairly significant objection to what Mr. Kessel has outlined in his memo? Think he's pretty much on the right track?
Yep.
Yes.
Wow.
It's not often that when you bring a proposal like this, it gets that warm of a reception, and the request is to add additional staff. So, I appreciate that stance on behalf of the commission, and so do the staff right now, because a lot of them are really working hard. They really are.
Well, check out that Department of Labor issue, and let us know as soon as you know whether or not we reached that 7.5% threshold. And I guess if we do, does that qualify us yet this year for that $500,000, or would that be in 2012?
No, that funding would be approved and in our pockets supposedly by September.
We would receive that.
So, you know, I'm suggesting that we would implement this in October, based on the July notice, if we get it, that we were at the 7.5, with the understanding that in September, we'd be reimbursed for any expenses that we've incurred in the August timeframe.
Okay.
But then your suggestion, Mayor, was if we can fund it, for instance, with the solid waste, that even if we get that additional money, that money would go into the general fund rather than appropriating it for these three positions, if we can?
It would go into this, this oil impact fund that It would go into this, this oil impact fund that Mrs. Johnson mentioned earlier at the meeting, which is a new fund. Right now, we've just taken our oil impact money because it hasn't been that really significant and just right into the general fund, which was the appropriate thing to do. But we're anticipating that as time goes on, the oil impact monies could be quite a bit larger, plus we'll have to have accountability and transparency. So if we put all the money into the oil impact fund and then appropriate it out, whether it's appropriated to the general fund or, you know, it could go to the water fund to pay for the, or help defer the costs on the water wastewater treatment facility. It, you know, if Mr. Jackson's fears turn out to be well-grounded that we're leaning already too heavily on rates, say in solid waste collection, you could send some money over there, but you'd have the transparency of doing that. And so it, while I think it would primarily go for the general fund, again, it doesn't have to.
Right. Okay.
But, you know, I think regardless of whether we make that, that threshold or not, we probably have to do all of what you suggested or most of what you suggested this year and, you know, rely on other revenues. And I guess the primary revenue that we would rely on there is additional half-percent sales tax, which we can transfer into the general fund as property tax reduction.
President Johnson, based on that comment that we should utilize our enterprise funds as much as possible, you know, one of the three positions I've suggested is an enterprise fund accounts, solid waste operator. If that would be the case, there's no reason really that we have to wait then until August to find out about a funding stream. So I know we're not asking for action tonight, but maybe at the next commission meeting then, you can expect a request to add a solid waste operator immediately.
Yeah. And I, I think that would be appropriate. If at a later date, as, as the numbers add up, if, if it looks like there's just too much pressure on that, on the expense side of the solid waste fund, I mean, we can, you know, take money from the oil impact fund and move it there. I don't, personally, I don't think that'll be the case this year. But as you pointed out, too, we have a study that's just started that by the time they're done may show that we've got some pretty significant project costs facing us there, too.
Well, again, I thank the commission for your receptiveness to this, and I'll put it together with your comments and present it formally for action at our next commission meeting.
Well, that was sure a long report, too, by you. So you have one more thing to report on?
The only thing that is left is a, just a thank you note that we received from our former library director, Cheryl Tollefson, and that is provided in your packet. So that would complete my reports, then.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Seabock, do you remember, do you have a fire department report? It's been so long since you were last.
Thank you for remembering, President Johnson, commissioners. I promised I'll be brief. The Dickinson Fire Department responded to 28 incidents in May, which included a general alarm structure fire, three vehicle fires, one grass fire, an additional building fire, two trash fires, and four carbon monoxide calls. In addition, on May 24th, at the Badlands Activity Center, Assistant Chiefs Larry Callahan and Curtis Freeman took part in a health and safety fair where we had on display our regional response vehicle, a Suburban. May 24th and 25th, we also met with a representative from the Insurance Service Office, ISO, who was collecting data to review our public protection classification rating, which is currently a four. It will be a while before we get the results of that. Also, currently this evening at the central fire station, we're hosting a assistance to firefighters grant writing workshop with a representative from the assistance to firefighters office, grant office out of Denver. And unfortunately, at the same time, I have to report to you that we have received notice that our grant, our assistance to firefighters grant that we had written to purchase the air packs has been denied. We will have another chance again this year, which would put it, you know, in a timely position for next year's purchase. Next year, those air packs that we currently have have to come out of service. And again, unfortunately, we were denied that grant. That concludes my report. Thank you.
And if we have to cover the air packs ourselves without any grant assistance, roughly how much is that?
$180,000.
$180,000. Well, write a good grant.
We'll try. Thank you.
Chief Rommel, Police Department. Can you walk a little faster?
I'm trying to figure out this gizmo, sir. Just hanging on here. I have a PowerPoint presentation that, yeah, there we are. Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. I have the May, monthly May traffic report here. As you can see from the slide, there were 82 accidents in May, which is unusually high, but 20 of those were hit and run accidents, five were injury reported or injury-related accidents. We did see, I think, kind of a milestone, there were 579 traffic stops.
Is that a lot?
That's a lot. Yeah, that's, that's a new benchmark for us about. As you see on this next slide, the traffic stops of the 579, there were speeding seat belts, traffic control devices, and 233 other violations. So as you can see, the uniformed officers out there on the street are very busy. And then on top of that, we've had for this month 1,958 calls for service compared to 1,582 last year at the same time in one month. And as you can see from this graph, that the calls continue to rise above last year. Some training for our officers that I would like to mention, SWAT Basic, couple of our officers went to that, Street Survival Seminar, Domestic Violence Training, several officers went to that up in Wofford City, and REED Interviewing Techniques, which is a system of interviewing. Several officers also attended that in Bismarck. In our community activities, there was a kids' health and safety fair that was held May 24th at the BAC, and here's a picture of our McGruff and Company as they took part in that. And with that, I would be glad to entertain any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments for the chief? Another busy month, though.
It was a very busy month. Thank you, yes.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Tab 6, Public Works and Planning, and the first item there is a development impact fee project, and Mr. Soren, you're presenting that?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson and city commissioners. The first two items, I'm going to talk about both of them together. They are two phases for development impact fees. The first phase is to do the underground, the water sewer improvements for Cook Meadow Hills, that'd be the entire subdivision. And the second phase is to come back and do the streets, curb, and gutter. Both phases are approximately $490,000, which makes them, that's the engineer's estimate, which makes them eligible for approximately $245,000 of impact dollars towards those projects. As you may have noticed earlier, in Mrs. Johnson's report on impact fees, we have $281,000 currently available, which means if both of these projects were approved, as the requests came in to start paying, we'd have to watch that number because our current ordinance doesn't allow us to pay more than $4 million. It would allow us, as we received funds in, to continue to pay those out to stay under that cap. This is a new subdivision on the north side of town, and the developer is hoping to at least, he's wanting approval for both of them, but at a minimum, he would like to get Phase 1 so he can get that process or that project started and move forward with his development. I don't believe our ordinance prevents us from approving both, though, even though we've met our limit. It would just limit us on the rate that we could pay those back to that $4 million cap.
Thank you, Mr. Soren. Mr. Colley, these would be Resolutions 35 and 36?
That's correct, Mr. President, 35 and 36.
Well, I think, you know, this just raises the issue I brought up, too, a few minutes ago. I, you know, I think if we act favorably on these, we really have to ask city staff to kind of take a look at those self-imposed limits and get out your crystal ball and maybe come back to us with a recommendation, whether it's remain at where it's at or if there's another level we should go to, and we should start discussing that and thinking about that.
Mr. President?
Yes?
One comment I can make on the ordinance. The hard cap that our ordinance sets for total development impact fees is $7 million. There's a distribution in there that says the city should endeavor or should try to keep a balance of $3 million toward industrial and commercial projects and $4 million toward residential projects, but that $4 million is not a hard cap figure. That is something that the ordinance specifically allows to be exceeded temporarily as long as the $7 million hard cap is not exceeded.
And we're underneath the $7 million.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colley. Good point.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Soren, I'm looking at the maps that are included with this request. Are both, are both projects, what is he calling them, Phase 1 and 2?
Yes.
Are those both included in the Cook Meadow Hills addition, or is part of it some of the area to the north?
No, it's both in the Meadow Hills addition. It's water and sewer is Phase 1 within that.
Okay.
And street, curb, and gutter is Phase 2.
This is a relatively small portion of the entire plant.
Yes, he's got, you know, a master plan for that whole 160 acres. This is the portion that he just completed the plating of this past spring and is looking to develop. I believe the Phase 2 and possibly Phase 3, he's going to be looking at starting the plating process for those and bringing that through as well as he's started to see a lot of interest in the development of this, these lots.
So is his request just for the light gray area or the light and the dark gray area or everything in that boundary? What does this impact?
Just for, I would say, the white area.
Just the white area?
Right. The light gray and the dark are future projects that he's looking to be. They are part of the city, they're part of our annexation because they're his next plating step that he'll be going to. Currently, it's just the white area that he's planning to develop with the water sewer
Any other questions?
One question. I'm trying to put my fingers on the, on the table that shows all the projects here. Are there any of these projects that we've already improved for impact funding that aren't active? As I look at them, it appears not. It appears they're all active at various stages.
They are all active.
In other words, those impact projects that have been approved will probably be expended.
Right.
Probably this year.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why we're going to have to make a decision on moving additional funds into
Mr. Soren, so with the two proposals that are in front of us for this phase, the 489 and the 487, you're saying that impact funds would be about 250 for each?
Approximately that would be the 50% of that cost.
So about $500,000 in general, half of it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I'm not, I just need to see if we need to make a correction here. On the front of both resolutions, you have the developer, Painted Canyon Estates, and then down below that, you're talking about Cook Meadow Hills. Shouldn't that be all be changed to Cook Meadow Hills? Both, on both of them? First page, 1, 2, third paragraph down, Painted Canyon Estates, and then 4, 5, 6, one down referring to Cook Meadow?
They are Cook Meadow. You are correct.
Okay. So Painted Canyon, will we correct?
Right.
Mr. Soren, on that, back to that chart that summarizes all the impact projects, the right-hand column summarizes the lots that are created. I see we don't have a number in the last five projects. Is that 333, does that include those five blank items, do you know, or not? I'm guessing not.
I don't believe it does. And those last, the last four projects that are on there are the Estates 5th and 6th and the Painted Canyon, and both of those are recently approved, and we just haven't got to getting those in. Certainly, we can get those numbers.
And those four probably approach 200 lots? 150?
Probably. I want to say Painted Canyon was right around 90, and Washington 4th, I believe, was 30, 33, and Estates 5th and 6th is probably around that 40, I would guess. Estates 5th and 6th does include some large R3 development as well.
I have a general question, I guess, and I would ask Mr. Frenzel to put on his real estate hat. What do you see typically as a general amount of specials that are attached to a city lot? What's kind of the average that you see when somebody's purchasing a city lot?
I have never, not recently, thought about the average on specials outstanding because that would only apply to relatively new projects.
Sure.
Is your bike on, Mr. Frenzel?
Yes. So I honestly couldn't give you a guess, and it would only be a guess.
I'll ask you to roll with me on this one, then. I'm just doing the simple math of letting this subdivision divide it into the two phases. They want to do the infrastructure and then the curb and gutter separate, and so it's going to be a $500,000 special by the time we're done. And there's 32 lots in this. And there's 32 lots in this area that we're looking at, so that's going to be a special of $15,625 per lot. Does that seem high, low?
High.
That's what I thought. And so my concern by letting the developer double dip and pass those monies directly on to the consumer is that we're eventually creating a problem there. In my opinion, when you're looking at this overall development and you're pushing $500,000 directly into the developer's pocket and then taking that same number and passing it on to the consumer, and in this case, 32 lots, $500,000, double dipping, is going to be $15,625,000 in special assessments paid over 10 years by the consumer, which is going to be $1,562.50 for the next 10 years, in addition to their property taxes, in addition to, you know, everything else that goes into the mortgage with that property. Seems a lot passed on to the consumer in this case.
I would have to agree with you that it is. A lot.
Because in your past experience, and I know lots have gone up in price, but, you know, you could pick up a city lot for $15,000 in some cases. Not just have, not anymore, but...
Look, some of the properties being, still being built on, this is excessively high. A large number that's going to be, try, they're going to try to pass it on to the ultimate consumer.
Exactly.
And quite frankly, they're just paying another $15,000 a lot in what they're doing, but that's...
So, in my mind, that's a disservice to the end consumer when we are pushing, and maybe it's just the number of lots in this particular one, you know, if it was twice as many lots or, you know, and that's what bugs me about the impact program is that we have developers that are coming back time and time and time again. And so if you look at the chunk that we are looking at approved tonight and the overall scheme of this development, you come back to us 10 different times before this development is done. And if we did it the same way each time, we're passing $15,000 in specials per lot, it's a lot of money back into the developer's pocket and a lot resting on the shoulders of people buying these houses, and we're really hoping it all works out over the next 10 years, that there's no retraction in the oil market, no retraction in the housing market, and that everybody's able to pay these specials. And the developer will be gone, the money will have gone into his pocket, and as a commission, we're really, really laying it out there to hope that it's all going to work out. And I guess in my mind, in the math on this one, I have a hard time warranting $15,625 in specials per lot.
Mr. President, what am I missing here? If we didn't do this, the lots would be $15,000 higher, correct? Purchase price, I mean, we have to assume that the purchase price would be $15,000 higher.
But it would be on the developer's shoulders and not the shoulders of, you know, the future homeowner and the city, I guess. We're laying out the money would be the difference, is that we are loaning or putting out that money and hoping to get the payback on it.
We are taking risk, yeah.
We are assuming the risk.
But as far as the property owner, the way I look at it is we're just financing part of the, part of that at a pretty good interest rate. Brings us risk and the rest of the taxpayers in town risk. Am I missing something?
I think what we're missing here is, you know, when we put the $300,000 limit on was kind of limit the city's amount of risk on any one development. Well, the developers are smart, and so they've tried to do their phasing small enough that they're $600,000 phases. So in effect, we finance 50%. You know, so I think that really the question that we should address is whether or not just to do away with the $300,000 limitation and say our policy is to finance 50%, because that's in effect what we're doing anyway. And then you let them phase it the way that it most naturally should be done instead of trying to figure out how to...
Game the system.
Game the system, yes. Because again, here, this isn't the kind of phasing that we envisioned when we wrote the resolution. We didn't, you know, we assumed a, you know, square footage portion in a sense phase. We didn't think of, well, the streets would be one phase and the, you know, the sewer line would be another phase. That is what we were thinking. And, you know, I think we could just as well look at saying, look, our policy will be to fund a certain percentage, period.
Period.
Whether it's 40% or 30 or 50 or 60. What we did in the first oil boom, as I understand it, is the city funded 100%.
Right.
And so by funding 50, we're, we've reduced our risks there. Our, I mean, there is no way to do this that is totally risk-free, you know?
And that's not my point. And I do see that we have a need to help move things along, otherwise, we won't get the construction that we need. But when you look at this instance and the way that it's phased in...
It's gaming.
It's gaming the system.
Yeah.
And somebody's going to get hurt in the end, whether it's the consumer or if there's a retraction and it ends up...
Well, it's, it's, no, I don't think the consumer is getting, getting hurt here because if, if the engineer's estimates are correct, you know, he...
It is the real cost.
It's the real cost. The developer could just change the size of the phase again and capture the same amount of money from us. I, again, I think the real issue is the $300,000 limitation. We, I'm, you know, I'm kind of thinking we should take a look at that and say, maybe we should get rid of that and just go with a fixed percentage that will... So, I mean, if a developer has the wherewithal that they can develop 200 lots in one phase, so be it. And if our policy is 50%, then we look at that. Right now, we are just encouraging them to manage their phases to capture the most amount of city money, and that may not be the most effective and efficient way of doing this.
And wouldn't you rather see our city money spread out over the most lots at a time as far as development?
Well, you could do it on a per lot basis, but then I think you're just, you're inviting another way to game the system to it.
Right.
So, personally, I think a percentage would probably be most appropriate, but, you know, if we're going to look at the limits here, I think I would encourage our staff just to relook at the whole process. We've had some experience now. We've got some additional talent on staff here with City Planner. Maybe you have some other ideas. But I, let's, we've got good developers working here. Let's not force them to kind of work the system.
Exactly.
You know, and the percentage doesn't have to be 50, it can be some other number, but just so they know what the rules are.
Yeah, and I'm not anti-development, I'm not anti-helping the developers move forward. I'm just sick of the system getting gamed.
No, let's bring some simplicity to it so they don't have to do that.
President Johnson, if I could, you know, you're exactly right, and it is difficult from our perspective as we're trying to work with developers on this and them trying to bring the games to the table to try and get the most bang for their buck. But back to Commissioner Altman's, you know, these lots in this area were larger than the normal lots that we've seen, and we have seen development costs on lots in town up to $45,000. If the developer paid 50%, they're still at $22,000 for the 50% share. So, when you start getting, you know, 12, 13,000 square foot lots, that's the, that's what ends up happening is those specials increase. A 7,200 square foot or 7,500 square foot lot, currently with the developer paying 50%, you're still looking at $8,000, $9,000 worth of specials on a lot of that size. So, I don't know that the amount that is going towards these is any different than we've seen in other areas, other than the lots are bigger and you don't have as many lots to split that cost on. So even if it did a bigger area, because of the size of the lots, you're probably going to see a similar cost associated to each lot to be developed. And we do actually only pay 50% of actual costs, so...
Right.
It's not a dollar we're giving right back to the developer for him.
Well, I'd recommend that you take a comprehensive look at that resolution. We, like I said, we've had a couple of years' experience here now. We certainly didn't anticipate all the ways a developer would look at this program. We've had the experience now, we can see what they're doing. I think we could simplify this. You know, this is just off the top of my head and it's probably another one of my bad ideas, but I'll say it anyway, but if you wanted, I think you could look at kind of a sliding scale. If lots of a certain square footage, maybe we'll go 50%. If they get to be pretty large, maybe we're only going to go 40%. If, for example, if we think it's in the best interests of the city to, if lot size is a big thing, you could regulate it that way. On the other hand, once you, that could open just a can of worms, once you start dealing then with multifamily houses, you know, does that, well, how do you handle that with lot size? So, I think I'm right. It was just another one of my bad ideas.
You know, but I agree with you in the fact that where it leaves a bad taste in my mouth is when we're using the same incentive for an estate-type lot that's going to be a high-end home. I would rather get much more bang for a buck. We need lower and middle and average-type houses to be built, and I would rather see the same division, you know, have 64 lots rather than 32, and then you would feel like you are making an impact in the number of houses that are being built. And again, 15,000 in specials on a high-end lot, high-end home, probably not a big deal for that end consumer, but from the city wouldn't, I would rather have seen 64 middle-to-to lower-priced homes be built so that we could start easing the pressure that we're feeling in that sector. So your sliding scale makes sense in that respect, that you would be able to put higher incentives on where our higher need is.
Yeah, I agree. If somebody came in with like one four-acre lot and said, "This is our development, we want you to," you know, "special assess half the development costs," that wouldn't make much sense.
Right.
You know, you'd carry it to that extreme, so...
Mr. President?
Mr. Coley?
Just to make the commissioner aware, the ordinance that we have does create that flexibility, that the commission can approve a development impact fee request of up to 50% of reimbursement of actual costs. If you wanted to choose another percentage, you could do that on any individual project, and that would be an option that you would have open to you.
Yeah, and that's good flexibility to have, but, you know, I would hate for us to try do that. I'd like to see it be a little more rigid because invariably, we're going to make a choice that we'll later regret, you know, and then that'll be the standard by which everybody else compares to. It's a little bit like a property tax exemption. I remember one we made early in my tenure as mayor that we never should have done, but after we did it, and then everybody who came and requested said, "Well, you did it for so-and-so, you should do it for me." And it's like, well, yeah, we messed that one up. That doesn't mean we have to mess up two or three of them. But that's, that's what happens when you, it's good to have that discretion, but I think you should seldom exercise it.
Well, I would agree with that. I think the other thing we have to remember is that, I know at least in my case, I think that developers probably have a better handle on what the market is for houses and for lots too, better than I do at least. So, you need to be a little bit careful second-guessing that. But I do agree that we should be doing something so that this, playing with the phasing, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
It'd no sense doing that, it's obvious what's happening. I do believe, and I could be wrong in this, but I do believe that what we were doing 30 years ago is that the developer was paying for all of the water and sewer upfront. The streets were then special assessed entirely, 100% of the streets. Quite sure that's what our policy was 30 years ago.
I know the city ended up with a pretty big liability there of, for special assessments. You know, I think our big concern is when we look at a development like this is, you know, if we're putting in half the money here, can you actually sell the lots? Is there demand? Because if it turns out there's no, if there isn't sufficient demand for the lots, then we do have a problem. That's...
And we have talked before about the fact that this phasing does tend to give us some comfort about not going too far with things.
They take little bites as opposed to big bites. That's, that is a plus about the phasing. Instead of coming in and doing all 200 lots in one shot...
And while that may not be our issue today, we need more houses, we need more developed lots today. We still have to keep that in mind.
So there was some logic maybe to the phasing too, so... Mr. Cretan?
Mr. President, you might want to consider it being more incentive-based, where if you look at either affordable housing or moderate-income housing and have a higher percentage for that. Jurisdictions will do that. Either they'll grant, you know, on some zoning ordinances, they'll grant density bonuses for that, but in this case, what we're talking about is providing a funding mechanism in order for them to provide infrastructure to develop. But we could look at affordable housing or moderate housing and say, okay, if you do that, you can get 60%. And if you go towards the higher end of the market, then at that point, you max out at 20 or 30, and by that, you could provide an incentive for the developers to build more moderate to affordable housing for the community, which is desperately needed as well. That's another twist to it, if you prefer.
I like that idea. That's something that you could really stand behind and say that you are looking out for the general constituents and you're really pushing for the greatest need.
Well, Ed, if you'd have brought that idea up 20 minutes ago...
We could have had the conversation over with.
Well, that does sound like a reasonable approach. Why, again, we can't really crass that here tonight. I think we've had a great discussion. I'd say, take what you've heard tonight, take, use your own experiences, and come back with some suggestion or two for us here. Again, we have, I think, the issue of we probably have to expand the size of what we've been doing here, and if we're going to make a change there, if there are some other rules we should change, now would be an appropriate time to do it, and I've heard some good ideas here tonight. Having said that, you know, are, can we act on what we have here or, I think at the end of the day, it's kind of the same, the result, it's the same. I mean, we could turn them down and he'll just come back and do it differently, but when it's all said and done, we'll invest about $500,000 into this same general area, I think. Or am I missing something? Mr. Soren?
No, I think you're correct, and, you know, he's looking to get these improvements started and moving forward with it. started and moving forward with it. I do know he's talking to some local builders who have interest in buying the lots and are, he's inquiring about how soon they can start building on them for construction. So I do think it's a good addition to the community, and he's followed the steps. We just want to make sure that, for the development to move forward, that we're continuing with the logic, logical development in the area and making sure the product's done right.
Now, I'm not trying to make an example of him. I just wanted to raise, you know, all the general concerns that we have. And like the mayor said, we're a year or two into what's very new for us, and there's got to be a better way that we can do it. And again, my intention isn't to make an example of this development, but we do need to make some changes moving forward with it.
Mr. President, with respect to development impact fees, I think it only makes sense that we look at something, this program started probably seven years ago now. And as you may recall, we did start with a, until you build on it, you had a five-year free exemption, and then it went, and we transferred that to a ten-year special assessment district starting as soon as the project was done to where we're at now. And, you know, I think through the time, we've definitely seen things change with the needs for development, the size of the developments, and what the developers are seeing for demand. And that comes back to some of these phasings, you know, even State Sedition, Painted Canyon, both of them have a huge interest in those lots, and that's why they feel comfortable in putting both phases together up front to try and move those projects forward. So I think we're seeing it evolve a little bit. We just need to try and be proactive, I guess, in staying with it and making sure that we're not stretching ourselves too far. But, you know, I think we've seen the program evolve quite a bit, and it's been very good for the community.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. Would you be ready to act on each of these two resolutions? We have to act on them separately.
What are the two resolution numbers again?
Thirty-five and thirty-six.
I'll move that we approve Resolution thirty-five dash two thousand and eleven, which is the Phase One of the Coke Meadow Hills addition.
Second. We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Takes us to Item B there. Resolution thirty-six.
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution number thirty-six dash two thousand and eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Hopefully, within the next one or two meetings, then you guys could come back with some of your thoughts on this, okay? Because I'm sure we're going to have some others coming up. Okay, Item C is a rezoning petition, and that's got to be Mr. Cortan's.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is a petition or request to rezone from R2 to R3. The site is located north of Twenty-first Street West and east of Prairie Oaks Avenue and to the west of the Century Apartments. The proposed rezone is consistent with the land uses and properties to the east and northeast. There are no changes from the first reading, and staff recommends approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance? No one from the public? Any comments by city staff or commissioners? Not? Would there be a motion regarding second reading and final passage?
I'll move for approval, the second reading, final passage ordinance fourteen seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Any items here on the Board of Adjustment meetings or Planning and Zoning meetings that you want to highlight?
Mr. President, they're for information purposes. The planning and zoning minutes are from the last meeting, and the items that the, at the last, at the last City Commission, you addressed those in particular. And the Board of Adjustment are from our last meeting that we had, and we had three items that were granted variances for.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
You know, you can see with the planning and zoning minutes that things are really busy with planning and zoning. Mr. Cortan is really doing a great job bringing those things to planning and zoning in an organized fashion. But you might also be interested to know that the County Zoning Board is equally as busy. The number of plats, the number of rezoning requests, this next agenda of the County Zoning Board has about six hundred acres of plats being proposed.
Wow.
Residential and industrial. So it might just be something we want to be aware of in the greater picture.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We have an Item E, which we added. That's the ETZ ordinance. It'd be the first reading, and Mr. Cortan, we'll let you introduce that also.
The item in front of you tonight, Mr. Presidents and Commissioners, is the, we have attached in your packets or given to you today, a map that's showing the Dickson Extraterritorial Zone, as modified per our latest annexations. Also, we've included the legal description for it and the ordinance, the first reading for the ordinance of that. There's been some modifications to it. From our first ones, you can notice to the, directly to the north and to the south, you'll notice a significant jot around the subdivisions. We held off on bringing it to the City Council or City Commission a month ago because we needed to have a legal determination if we can proceed through, proceed through a subdivision. We found out that we could, but it made sense to either completely include it or completely exclude it. So that's why we've excluded those subdivisions in order to avoid confusion. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, and this ordinance number...
It's been one-four, one-eight.
Fourteen eighteen, okay. Well, you've heard Mr. Cortan's report. Do you have any comments or questions before we ask for a motion?
Have we been communicating with the county? I mean, it's pretty routine, but we've been communicating with the county about this action.
President Johnson, Commissioner Jackson, we've had brief discussions with the county. Our hopes after tonight, if we do the first reading, we'll definitely be getting on the agenda with the proposal of the change. We have not talked to them in regards to some of these subdivisions that were in question on both the north, south, and how the ETZ would affect those areas. I would also like to point out there's some other questions. If you look at our map on the wall, previous adoption of our extraterritorial, they went by the quarter section. And the Century Code clearly states now that we have to go to the quarter-quarter section. And I don't know if that's a change from the original one, but you can see a lot more jogs in this map than are on there because of the interpretation of the Century Code requiring us to do that. But to answer your question, we will be taking the, after this, if we approve this tonight, certainly be taking this to them as the document that we're looking to proceed forward with, the final document. This gets it on the table, open for discussion, and we do have time in between, or if there's some concerns they have, to make some adjustments to that.
Thank you, Mr. Soren. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? No one from the public? Is there a motion regarding this proposed ordinance?
Mr. President, I'll move for adoption of the first reading of the ET ordinance, ETZ ordinance, ordinance, I'm sorry, I missed the number again.
Fourteen eighteen.
Ordinance fourteen eighteen.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Then, under City Commission concerns, it's my understanding that we will not have a quorum on July 5th, or possibly any day of that week because of the holidays. July 5th is a Tuesday. Could we schedule that, reschedule that meeting for July 11th? Would we have at least three of us here? And then our regular meeting would be July 18th.
That works for me.
I think it works for me.
No, it works for me, I guess.
We've got three, Mr. Frenzel.
It may not work for me. I'm not sure yet, but it may not.
It's fine with me.
Okay, I think we have at least four, so we may not have the four highest-quality ones, but we got four. Should we do that, then? Will, does that take a motion, Mr. Colley?
No, Mr. President, it doesn't take a motion, but we'll just have to notify the press and other entities and make sure it's...
Okay, well, right now, then, we'll plan on July 11th and July 18th. Are there any other City Commissioner issues? Anybody from the public wish to address this? Chair to entertain a motion to...